I'd like to bring to order, excuse me, the San Rafael City Council meeting of Monday, August 5th, 2019, ask you to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge of allegiance, I testify that the United States of America and here in the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, thank you. Good evening. Closed session, we did not media, meet in closed session, so there will be no report there, but we do have a next time for you to address us this evening on matters that are not on, excuse me, this evening's agenda, won't be able to take action on your points, but certainly interested in them. I have four cards, and we'll start with those, and then anyone else that wishes to speak in this agenda item will be, will be welcome. We'll start with Clay Shank. Clay?
Can I stand here?
Identify yourself if you would, and then make your point in a couple minutes.
Hi, my name is Clay Shank. Hello, everybody. Hello, council. I am a community member of Marin County. I grew up here. I'm a skateboarder, and I'm proud to have been a part of the development and construction of the new skate parks in Bolinas and Mill Valley. And I had heard a little bit about desires to develop a central public skate park for the city of San Rafael, and wanted to check in and see how the council, how the community feels about developing something. I think the idea was at Albert Field. I really am kind of new to the discussion about these things, but I know that there's a lot of skateboarders around who would love to have something centrally located in San Rafael. And we have had great success in Bolinas and Mill Valley. It was the same crew both places, and if you've seen either of those skate parks, you know that they're turned up, they've turned up pretty well, and they're good quality, and they'll last for a long time. So, just want to make connection here and see how y'all feel, if there's a way to move forward with making something like that happen.
And thanks for your comments and bringing it to our attention. Actually, there is one of it at Albert. I assume I might take a look at that. Yeah, there is. So, look at that. And if there's further interest, our city manager will bring it to the attention of Parks and Rec.
There is a skate park at Albert Park?
Yeah. So, anyway, thanks for your comments.
Thanks a lot.
Next, Michael Parsons.
My name is Michael Parsons. Mayor Phillips, council members. For almost a month, I've awakened to feeling like a hostage. When I open my front door, I am confronted by a woman who has been living in her car across the street. I'm a victim of my neighborhood. If I lived in a more affluent area, the issue would have been already addressed. There are flies, food scraps, toilet paper with some manner of feces on it in the surrounding area. Both San Rafael police and parking enforcement has visited the site numerous times. I am not the only caller. The answer is always the same. Nothing can be done because of the court's ruling in Martin versus Boise, and she moves her car every seventy-two hours. I don't believe that's the case. Los Angeles has done something to protect the rights of residential owners. It has just extended a law which bans sleeping in a vehicle in a residential area or in proximity to a school or park. They also offer areas to park that is safe and has restrooms. Wouldn't this be a possibility if the city and county got together to find a solution? The solution is not putting up no parking signs like the county did on Woodland Avenue. Modifying the seventy-two hour parking ordinance could at least be another partial solution. The ordinance presently does not define any distance a vehicle has to be moved. It just has to be moved. The lack of distance requirement has allowed the vehicle to remain within two parking places opposite my house. What would happen if the ordinance required a vehicle to be moved fifty yards? It would at least share the issue and not isolate it to one location. There could also be, possibly be another benefit. Vehicle storage in the city could diminish because of the new difficulty in moving it. But for the grace of God go I. It could be me living in my car or on the street. Something needs to be done to both protect the homeless and the rights of the property owner. Just walk down Forest Street and see where urine has flowed from a doorway to across the sidewalk.
Wrap it up, if you would, please.
Sidewalk, or that someone has again used my yard for a toilet. Saying it is complicated is an understatement. The solution I offer just to move the people along and protect the property owners like the county did with no parking signs on Woodland doesn't work. But how would you feel opening your door every morning to this? It could happen to you, and you would be powerless as me. Yet my issues are nothing compared to those of the two people who died in the street in my neighborhood. There is no excuse for this. Isn't there a solution that works to the benefit of other than one, or have we just given up?
Sure, if you could. Yeah. Then, thank you for your comments. We do have a homeless committee, and we'll take your comments into consideration. Tom Short.
Good evening, Mayor Phillips and council. My name is Tom Short. For the last twelve years, my wife and I have enjoyed living here in East San Rafael and the many benefits of living here, including the great work the city has done to improve this community. I'm here tonight to present information I've collected regarding an informal poll I took on banning gas-powered leaf blowers in the city of San Rafael. I posted a poll on Nextdoor.com two weeks ago that received over one hundred responses, seventy-five percent of which were in favor and in support of a full or partial ban on gas-powered leaf blowers. Now, realizing that these devices are very helpful and improve productivity of maintenance crews and city workers and homeowners, the proposal isn't to outright ban all leaf blowers. Partial bans can be put in effect that only go for certain times or for certain places, like commercial multifamily buildings and public spaces. They are allowed to use the gas-powered blowers, but homeowners are not, and that would affect the noise levels in residential areas. Other concerns include the dust that gas-powered blowers pick up. They're more powerful than the electric ones, and the dust contains fecal residue from pets and animals, toxins, mold spores, and other allergens that are very unhealthy for anyone, but particularly those suffering from asthma, allergies, and chronic coughs. Other communities in Marin have implemented full or partial bans, including Mill Valley and Belvedere, where there are no gas blowers allowed at all. Larkspur's put in a partial ban. I have the statutes and regulations for all of these. So, in conclusion, in order to improve the air quality as well as the peace and tranquility of our wonderful neighborhoods and this community, I'd like to request that the council consider adding this issue to its agenda for more formal consideration and action. I'd be happy to share my research on this with any interested council members, as well as members of the community. Thank you.
And thank you. And I would suggest that our city manager be most interested in your comments and perhaps some follow-up action as deemed appropriate. So, if you could perhaps comment or...
Mayor, could I just verify that we have Mr. Short's contact information on the comment card?
I think that's correct. In fact, I'll just send it down to you.
You're welcome.
Please, the telephone number. Thank you, Mr. Short, for your comments. Appreciate it. And finally, Jamie Cortez, regarding short-term rentals. Recognizing short-term rentals are on this evening's agenda, but I understand you have to leave early, so childcare issue, that's important.
Thank you for letting me speak now. I live in Terre-Linda, across from the high school, on a street with nine elementary-age children and twenty-two houses. Two that I know are short-term rentals, frequently used, one right next door to me, with two rooms, and many times with ongoing rentals, many times with the owner not on-site because they've come and asked, the renters have asked questions. It was disappointing to read the staff report based on what I felt were a lot of assumptions and focused on fiscal impact via low enforcement or minimal restrictions. I urge the city council to use a safety lens when considering these recommendations, not just cost. Our children are now feeling uncomfortable walking to each other's houses without the concern of new strangers on our street, and in the report, you saw that sixty-three percent of survey respondents were concerned about strangers in the neighborhood. So, I'm just here to ask that you think about the important need to protect current residents through stricter enforcements and limitations for the caps on nights, on the number of nights or people, rather than just a fiscal impact. So, thank you for listening.
Thanks for writing your comments and taking them into consideration when we get to the agenda items. So, thank you very much. Anyone else wish to address us under open time? I hope you can hear me okay. I'm sort of a hoarse voice, and I apologize for that. So, if you can't raise your hand, that'll be a signal to me. Jonathan, good evening.
Hi, Gary. Jonathan Freeman here. I'd like to echo the comments that Tom Short made. I've got to take these out, because I keep hearing myself a second later. There's an effort about two years ago to do some neighborhood organizing, and we met about three or four times until I was assaulted by a neighbor of mine, because he didn't like the fact that I was holding such meetings in my house. And I've been waiting for a rebirth of this, a little more energy production. This is what's, I'm really glad that Tom has picked up this baton, and I'd be willing to support him and be involved as much as I can. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. Anyone else? Yes, sir. Come on up.
Good evening.
Evening.
Good evening. My name is Richard Meyerhoff.
You, you, this relating to, it looks like it might, I haven't read it, obviously, but it looks like it might relate to short-term rentals?
Pardon?
Is your, are your comments with regard to short-term rentals?
Yes, sir.
I would suggest that you wait until we get into that agenda item, which will be in a few minutes, and then your comments will be perhaps more pertinent at that point in time. So, don't go away, but just perhaps wait for a moment. Anyone, excuse me, anyone else wish to address on matters that are not on this evening's agenda? See, no one will close. I'll now ask for the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few brief informational items. The first one is regarding wildfire prevention, and it seems like there's something going on just about every week, and as far as community meetings and different events and things like that. And this week is no different. We have a get-ready class that we put on through our fire department on August 8th, which is Thursday, at the Terre-Linda Community Center, at 6:30 PM. So, I think the get-ready classes had originally started with being kind of an opportunity to talk about how to prepare yourself in your own house, and then they're flexible enough to be able to talk about kind of what's going on regionally and what's happening with PG&E power shut-offs and things like that. So, we're kind of adding to the curriculum of those based on what's on people's minds. So, those are going on regularly, and I just wanted to note that there's one this week on August 8th for any community member that's interested, 6:30 at the Terre-Linda Community Center. On an unrelated topic, the IJ recently reported about numbers of homeless through the point-in-time count, and ran a story on that. There's a couple of points that I just wanted to make, as looked at differences in the point-in-time count from 2017 to 2019. And Marin County saw a seven percent overall decrease in homelessness and a twenty-eight percent in chronic homelessness, which is quite startling, because these counts are done everywhere. And when you look at, in overall, the Bay Area, Marin was, had, I think we were the only place that had numbers that were decreasing like this. In San Rafael specifically, from 2017 to 2019, there was a twenty percent decrease. And I'm not going to go into all of the reasons why I think that is, because that could, that would take another half an hour or so. But I do want to say that we have great information on our website about what's going on, on these topics. And I also wanted to thank, it really, isn't really just the city of San Rafael's work, but it's the city of San Rafael's work with all of our various partners. So, as you mentioned, Mayor, the council has a homeless subcommittee that's very active on this, on this topic. Really, the whole police force and fire department work on these issues on a daily basis. But in particular, Lynn Murphy, Andrew Henning, and then also our downtown foot patrol. And then, we work really closely with the county of Marin, both several departments and the board of supervisors, all the various service providers, like St. Vincent's, Ritter, Homeward Bound, and then the other jurisdictions in Marin. For example, everyone is participating and funding the mobile showers that are going on through the downtown streets team. So, I just wanted to call that out, because I think it's impressive. It's not a story that everyone hears, that is actually working here in Marin and working in San Rafael. It's certainly an uphill battle. It's something that's a national issue that we're dealing with locally, so we'll continue to work on this, on this topic. But it's great to have good news and show that this partnership that we have is actually paying off in Marin and in San Rafael. And then lastly, just three really quick arts-related items. There is an artworks exposition called ZenPop that's going on, that the city's participating in, along with Bank of, Bank of Marin, San Rafael Chamber of Commerce, and some other local businesses downtown. We have one of the pieces hanging in the stairwell of City Hall by Nellie King Solomon. So, that's something that's exciting to be able to focus on our. We got the one of fourteen cultural arts designations in the state, and I think that that's, you could see some of these things that are happening, I think, because of, because of that. Also, Parking Services, in an attempt to try to continue to place art in unexpected places, has a very, very large sign that is, that's temporarily not being used for parking, and they want to do a short-term art exhibit on it. So, that's something that they're doing, along with the cultural arts designation. And then lastly, I wanted to mention that we, we were notified through the executive director of artworks that an organization named San Rafael in their top twenty-five of America's most unique art towns. And they called out artworks specifically, Marin Society of Artists, the Arts, the Cultural Arts District, and the California Film Institute. So, there's, there's a lot going on downtown as it relates to the arts. I think the cultural designation just adds to the momentum of all the things that were kind of already happening, and then even more is taking off now. So, just wanted to point out that those things are going on. Thank you.
Excuse me, thanks for doing so. And with regard to the, the results of the homeless count, which is done every two years and showing a decline, a significant decline in San Rafael, quite frankly, I was not satisfied with the article in the newspaper to fully describe what has been done by so many people within, within San Rafael, and people you've mentioned, of course. And so, I've asked Andrew Henning, our person that's in charge of homeless on the staff, to help draft a letter to the editor, perhaps a vision that he and I will sign, and perhaps a couple others. But there's more to the story than was presented, and I think it was, frankly, I thought it was totally inadequate. So, hopefully we'll be able to flush that out some. Second, and I apologize, because it's going to take me a minute or two, but there's a matter that I wish to bring to your attention, and to the attention of the public, but also council members, on an action that I've decided to, to take. Yesterday, I received a request from our chief of police, excuse me, our chief of, fire chief, requesting that we lower our flag as required by, or specified by President Trump. And I've, I've received a number of them, but I want to share this with you. The request was, Mayor, again from our chief, Gray, please accept my respectful request to lower the US flags to half-staff as directed by President Trump in honor of the victims of the tragic shootings in El Paso, Texas, and Dayton, Ohio. It goes on to say the flags will return to half-staff on August 8th at sunset, to which I replied to the request, yes. In other words, go ahead and lower the flags, yes, although I am seriously considering leaving them at half-mast until we see some significant changes out of Congress to address the underlying issues. In this regard, I'd like to receive input from each of you, to several have addressed this too, but conclude by saying, but I've, I've had it simply lowering the flag. I, I also sent this note to our congressman, Jared Huffman, who I have great real respect for, and I certainly support, and I thought his comment back was, was kind of interesting, which I'll share with you as well. It is, "I feel the same way about the 'empty,'" in quotes, "moments of silence on the House floor. Not sure what I would do in your situation, but I agree that half-mast thing seems inadequate." So, under the jurisdiction which I have, is possessed as the mayor of San Rafael, the US flags in San Rafael have been lowered as half-staff, where they shall remain until my order to return to full staff is received. The future dates, the future dates shall be when the significant progress is made by Congress. For me, progress is made, this progress is when Congress takes specific action to address the issue. I am not prescribing that action, as that is their job, but I am saying that to do nothing is not acceptable to San Rafael. If I determine no action has been taken by Congress on this matter by September 16th, roughly a month from now, I will request we place the, on the agenda item, on this agenda item, for future follow-up by action by our full city council, including the possibility of the flag remaining at half-mast, or perhaps reinstated if the council so decides. We will make that decision on September 16th. My reason for taking this step is to recognize the significance of lowering the flag, which is symbolic of respect, mourning, and distress. I have concluded, and I believe many in our community agree, that steps need to be taken by Congress to address this pressing issue. We've all witnessed Conalbine High School shooting in 1999, some twenty years ago, where thirteen students were shot and killed, with numerous others seriously injured. Sandy Hook, this one really bugs me. Sandy Hook Elementary School shooting in 2012, seven years ago, where twenty children have been, were shot and killed. They were between seven and ten, six and seven, go imagine, along with six adults who were also killed. In 2019, to date, there have been two-hundred-and-fifty mass shootings, where seven-hundred-and-ninety-seven people were shot and two-hundred-and-forty-six have been killed. Included in this number are thirty-two killed just last week. Keeping the flag at lowered position will symbolize our frustration, dissatisfaction with the lack of action by Congress to act, to address this continuing issue that affects all cities and persons within the country. San Rafael will not wait any longer to express our impatience with those in Congress to take steps to address this issue on behalf of everyone. So, that's in place, will remain in place. Perhaps our city attorney might want to mention on this issue as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The mayor did contact me regarding this concept earlier today, and brought to my attention the policy that was developed some thirteen years ago, under the time of city manager Ken Nordhoff, that provides a written policy for the decision-making concerning whether to fly the flag at half-mast. And that policy adopted by the city specifically authorizes the mayor unilaterally, or alternatively, the city council, a majority of the city council, to make said determination. So, the advice that I provided was that the mayor does have that unilateral authority. I do think it wise to bring the matter back to the council, as he has suggested will occur on September 16, unless he makes a determination prior to then that action has occurred that would cause his decision to raise the flag again. So, the only other comment that I made to the mayor, which I'll observe at this time, is that I think oftentimes, we see the flag at half-mast at our fire stations and at City Hall, and unless someone inquires, the public is not necessarily aware, including the city attorney, as to what the reason is for why the flag is at half-mast. By way of example, we recently flew the flag at half-mast to memorialize and commemorate the passing of Justice John Paul Stevens. So, to me, it raises a question that I think we might address at some other time, of how we commemorate those and whose honor that choice is made. So, that's maybe something for another date as well.
And, and thanks for your comment. And I'll just quickly editorialize by saying that I've been asked and requested by the fire chief to lower the flag in a number of instances where similar tragedies have taken place. And, believe me, that part of the job I, I, I don't care for. And it bothers me a lot that we simply seem to lower the flag for five days or a period of time, usually five, and then after that passes, it goes back up. And I can't help but ask myself, on behalf of the community, is that all we're going to do? We're not going to raise the flag until we're satisfied that Congress, in fact, has gotten off the dime to address the issue. So, there you go. With that, we'll move on to the consent calendar. Anyone wish to hold any of the consent items? Anyone from the public wish to address this on the consent items, which are 4A through 4E? See, no one will return for a motion with regard to these items, covered by a single motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Moved, and second, and roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy, councilmember Collin.
Aye.
Councilmember Gambler.
Aye.
Mayor Phillips.
Aye, I'm at a carries four zero. Turning to other agenda items, 5A, retirement benefit report.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you. As you may know, back in 2014, the city council created an ad hoc committee that goes, it's an ad hoc, ad hoc committee, because we already have an ad hoc pension OPEB committee. And it was created so that an independent advisory group could make findings regarding discretionary actions available to the city that would further the city's pension and OPEB goals, as it's one of our largest liabilities. A written report with their findings was presented to council at that time in 2014. Fast forward a few years later, in 2018, late 2018, another independent advisory committee was formed to do a few things. One, update findings and other content that was in the original 2014 report. Two, explore additional findings that could be taken to continue to reduce the OPEB pension liability. And three, help answer questions that may arise as a result of the recommended actions. The group was chaired by Jeff Schopert, who's here, and comprised four others, Jim Holden, who's also here, Megan Hutchinson, Jack Nixon, and Alan Piambo. Over a period of just a few months, the committee put together an impressive report addressing all findings in 2014, as well as the city action to date of those findings, and came up with their own findings. These findings are written in the report, and the report discusses the pros and cons, and the feasibility as well of all of these findings. A few of the new findings include eliminating existing vacant positions to reduce the liability, analyzing the effect on city hiring impacted by PERS and the outcome of pending court cases, providing housing benefits within Marin County so that we could be more competitive amongst other employers, and limiting or reducing retiree cost of living adjustments going forward, not for past retirees, but future retirees. Staff has posted this report on the city's website, under the finance web, webpage, and we greatly appreciate all the work that was done by the committee and the thoroughness of the report. And with that, I'll leave it to Jeff to address any questions or discuss any items that you may have.
Well, excuse me, thanks for your report. And I truly want to thank Jeff and the committee that we appointed to address this issue. It had been, the topical area that is pension had been addressed by a different committee, did an excellent job in 2014. I felt that it had been a period of time, obviously, four years, now five, since we had received that input, and I felt that it's important for we as a council to be updated on the matter of pension. It's a significant item for us. It runs about $21 million a year to satisfy that, and I wanted to make sure that we were doing those things that the independent committee might, might suggest, or at least we consider them. And furthermore, that we were not, were reversed that. not, uh, were reversed that. I'll say that we're fully, uh, fully versed, uh, and current on, on this matter and this, uh, this topic matter. Uh, Jeff and your committee has done an outstanding job, and you really have done a good job. And I would suggest that any of you that are interested, any of you are not, I would still suggest that, uh, you go to the website and, and take a look at it. Uh, the work that, uh, Jeff and his committee done is truly outstanding. I, I appreciate, uh, Jeff, everything that you've done and, and certainly, uh, your committee. You stepped up without a blink, as five, without a blink, yeah, we'll be there, we'll do it, and they did. So, truly outstanding. Perhaps, uh, certainly Nadine provided a good summary, but, uh, from your perspective, you might wish to add, uh, add some to that.
Well, if I may, uh, first, uh, thank you very much for the opportunity to, uh, provide that service to the city that I deeply love and appreciate. Uh, I would like to acknowledge my other committee members who were terrific to, uh, work with, and, and each of whom brought a different perspective, uh, to the task, and that was Megan Hutchinson, Jim Holden, Jack Nixon, and, uh, former police lieutenant from the city of San Rafael, now the, uh, police chief in the city of Mill Valley, Alan Piambo. Uh, we were aided greatly in the work we did by, uh, freely given advice and availability from, uh, from city staff who not only started off the education process by handing us a six-inch-thick binder of, uh, of, uh, eight-point financial statements, uh, and I will confess we didn't read them all, but, but, but really more importantly, were available to answer questions as, as they came up. And it is a daunting task to get, to get your head around, uh, this particular issue, potential solutions, what can be solved, what appears difficult to solve because of constraints imposed by, uh, state law. I need to thank one more person, uh, and, uh, we had a, uh, a sixth member of the committee who was unappointed, and that was my wife, who acted as a, as a copy editor.
Don't forget her.
And, uh, and she pointed out, she, she asked the tough questions.
Yeah, no doubt.
And so, the, the, I hope the report, uh, reflects the, the benefit of her, her input. I would say my, my main takeaways, uh, or the committee's main takeaway was that the city has really done what it can do, uh, acting within the exist, existing parameters of, of, you know, restrictive state laws on the ability to change the pension situation. And despite the city doing what it, it can do, there are just hurdles that are difficult to overcome because there are, there, there are matters that are not dictated by, uh, city policy. They're dictated by people living longer, changes in demographics, changes in investment rate earnings, all, none, none of which is within the control of the city of San Rafael, nor is it necessarily within the control of the Marin County Employees Retirement Association, which administers the fund on, on behalf of the city. Uh, we tried to go through and, and look at each of the things that has been suggested by the prior committee, suggestions that are made frequently in the press, uh, and, uh, and then some others that were suggested by, came from some groups outside of our, our local community, uh, and, and tried to analyze those and, and, and reach some kind of conclusion about whether it was worth the voting more time to or, or not. But again, I thank you for the opportunity to serve. Uh, it, I hope it shed some, uh, light, uh, on the, on the issue, and, uh, we'd be happy to, happy to do it again in another four years. Yeah.
What's your phone number again? Well, uh, you, you mentioned, and, and certainly we are, are very appreciative because it's a very professional job, as certainly we expected at the outset, proven, uh, with the, the product. Uh, we do have a pension subcommittee, as you know, and pension subcommittee will be working our way through it as well. So, it's, uh, greatly appreciated, Jeff, uh, to you, and, and if you would, uh, thank for all of us, your, uh, fellow committee members, and we have, we have a certificate for each of you in appreciation, so maybe, maybe just give it to Jeff. And, and, um, yeah, for them. So, uh, if there are questions, that would be a, please.
Yeah, no, I echo the mayor's comments. This report was so thorough, and it's actually easy to read. Sometimes when you get into this, uh, subject matter, it can be really hard to follow, so excellent. I don't know if it's you, the team, and your wife that, um, helped make that happen. So, I just actually had a question in your research. The how, the whole housing benefit option is really intriguing because that's come up again, and it seems a little bit more thinking outside the box. Did you find any examples of any jurisdiction doing that anywhere in the nation yet?
I haven't, no, I haven't come across. I know that our own city has had, um, uh, some housing preference for city employees in connection with the below-market-rate how, homeownership program here. Those no longer exist because there are certain fair housing issues with, with that, so I'm not aware of other jurisdictions that have, have implemented it. But it, you know, it, it's something to, to keep in mind, and, uh, if, if, you know, if there are other people who have ideas about where it has worked or where it, it, where it could work, I think it, you know, it's, it's worth considering because it is something, one of the things that we learned and when we had the benefit of, uh, insights from, um, Chief Piambo, was that, you know, many, many, uh, public safety officers, officers and personnel, they, they, they come to regret the commutes that they have to undergo to work, uh, in the city. Even though it's a great place to work, it's, it, the commutes can be tough. And so, if this could be one little thing that might make it easier to retain, uh, people who are struggling with that commute, it's, it may be worth pursuing.
Great, thank you.
And I would just add, um, to that, it's something I've been considering for a period of time, um, because I do think that the community would be more, I'll say more than willing, I would be, to, uh, pay a little extra to have our officers live in our community. Right now, if there is fire or, you know, an outbreak of some kind that needs to be addressed by our public safety, good luck, because they're in, you know, points beyond. They're in Santa Rosa, they're in Sacramento, they're wherever. So, it would benefit the community, uh, if we were able to supplement to some degree, and I haven't figured out exactly how much yet, but I like sort of working on the concept, and the concept to me makes some sense. So, thanks for including that as part of your report.
You're welcome.
Yeah, um, thanks, Jeff, again, for the very, um, extensive report. Just to answer your question, I, I had a conversation with this, um, a city council member from the city of Vail, Colorado, three or four years ago, and they actually do have, uh, a housing assistance program for their employees, um, to help them with the, what is it, the higher cost of housing, um, in Vail. So, they have different programs for different levels of employees, um, that are, that are participating. They also do not have a defined benefit program. They have a defined contribution program as well, and so that's one of the ways that they can attract, um, uh, quality employees by offering them as a, if they're not getting the, the benefits of a defined benefit program, but to have that as a defined contribution program. Um, but Jeff, one of the questions that I, I didn't notice, I may have missed it, and I, I think I mentioned it to Nadine and to Christine, was the, the attempt that the city of San Diego, City and County of San Diego did, um, I think it was four or five years ago, by a proposition, um, that was submitted by, um, the citizens to, once that was passed, that I think it was the police department or the fire department was excluded from it, but, um, all new employees would be on a defined contribution program. Um, so they were able to, and they are similar to us in that they participated in a, um, an AMCARA-type program. I don't believe it was CalPERS, it was the San Diego County Employees Retirement System. And that's gone through the courts, um, and recently, as of, I think, May, um, the Supreme Court ruled that they, because of the way that it was submitted, they didn't say that it couldn't be done, but the way that it was submitted where, I think it was a member of the council or the mayor at the time was part of the, even though it was a citizens' initiative, was part of it and didn't, um, uh, interact with the bargaining groups to put it on there, that it was, by that case, it was, it was violation of that, and that thus it was deemed that they couldn't do it. I mean, they're appealing, from what I understand, and, and it looks like it was, uh, more of a technical piece than an actual piece. So, I was wondering if you guys looked into what they did in San Diego and if that could, or if that is an option, if it was done the right way.
My personal opinion, after having spent some time, uh, with this issue, is that we're really going to have to wait and see what the courts say and how they treat the California rule, and what they, what the courts will define as vested contractual rights versus what kind of rights can be, uh, taken away. And we have, it, it's such a complex, uh, operating environment now because we have, I mean, our, our city has, you know, three different tiers of, of retirement, you know, people who are considered legacy, who've been, who have the, the benefits the longest period of time, and then, and then San Rafael, as it has done on so many issues, took the lead to try to get ahead of this, this issue and started, so started negotiations with another group of, of, of employees at a certain point in time, and those are referred to as tier two employees. And then the Public Employees Pension Reform Act came along and said, okay, we're going to set the floor for, uh, for benefits for, for public employees, which then meant that the city could no longer deal, could no longer set its own, its own limits. So, I think there's a, there's going to be a lot more that's going to come out of the courts. You're exactly right. The San Diego case overturned the matter on a, on a procedural issue, saying that the, I think the mayor had acted improperly in getting it, yeah, on the ballot in the, in the first place. I, I think, we're not going, we're not going to know, it was beyond the ability of our, um, committee to sit there and prognosticate about, uh, how the Supreme Court's going to view these, uh, these issues. There is some good commentary, commentary, uh, online by reporters who have been following the issues, and that's cited in the, uh, in the report, and that's the best I can tell you now. We didn't, we didn't get to a point where we said, gee, this would have worked great had they not, uh, fiddled with the procedural, uh, niceties in, in an incorrect way.
Right, because that, what that was addressing, aside from the procedural place, was that all the existing employees would still maintain their defined benefit program, and it was just, it was kind of took PEPRA to the next level, rather than changing the dates of retirements and keeping everything in a defined benefit program. It said that all future employees would be hired under a defined contribution program. So, no one that was an existing plan would be denied the plan that they had. So, it kind of took on the best of both worlds from a, from existing employees and what they were contractually obligated to, um, and into new hires, to go out there and say, this is the new program that you're in, and whether or not a person wanted to choose to participate in that or not.
Well, we're probably not going to resolve that here.
So, no, I was just, you know, right.
And I just, I just, they just follow up, uh, on a, on a couple of different issues that are covered in the report. There's a comment that says, we don't know what the effect of PEPRA is on this attempt by the city to either extend greater benefits or, or, or withdraw benefits and, and restructure them. And I think that it's still, that question is, is up, still up in the air.
Well, earlier you mentioned four years. I'm sorry, it's probably two years. We're going to ask you, ask you once again, so please stand by.
Okay, right, all right.
Thanks, again.
Thank you.
You and I, the whole committee, excellent job. Um, is there a motion with regard to the acceptance? Oh, yeah, that'd be a good idea, I'm sorry. Public comment, thank you. Good evening.
Mr. Mayor and council members, dictate with Citizens for Sustainable Pension Plans? I agree the committee should be congratulated for its comprehensive and well-documented report. I have one suggestion on its OPEB findings, OPEB, which is retiree health care. Item two, reduce OPEB commitments. On OPEB, the committee believes the city has reduced its future liabilities to the greatest practical extent, and the amount of any further benefit reduction would be relatively small when compared to overall retiree benefits. When it comes to OPEB, there are two main components that could be modified: eligibility, qualifications, and benefit costs. Beginning in two thousand and one, you started eligibility modifications, and that component is well under control as of two thousand and ten. The cost of benefits has been reduced by imposing a monthly cap for most retirees, but potentially more can be done in this area. It's important to recall that the monthly cap is not subject to the California rule. Equally important, should retirees who have a very rich pension plan be entitled to a very rich health insurance premium allowance? More on this later. As you probably know, Kaiser Permanente has a number of plans for pre-Medicare individuals. These range from bronze to silver to gold to platinum, each increasing in benefits and premiums. Currently, a fifty-five-year-old male, uh, the premiums range from six hundred and fifty to a thousand and ninety per month, a range of over two, four hundred dollars. The individuals I've surveyed who don't have health insurance that is provided or subsidized by private or public agencies opt for the Kaiser Bronze or Silver Plan. Now, back to retiree health. San Rafael uses CalPERS for its employees and retiree health insurance, and CalPERS has only one pre-Medicare plan for the Bay Area. We have compared the benefits of Kaiser's pre-Medicare, pre-Medicare plans, and on that scale of bronze, silver, gold, and platinum, the CalPERS benefits are platinum plus.
Could you, uh, could you wrap it up, Les?
Well, basically, I think the committee should look into changing the benefit structure to, to a basic plan, uh, like, such as Kaiser Bronze.
Okay.
Where individuals can up, upgrade it with their own account.
And thank you for your comment.
Okay, well, the best news is.
Say it again?
There is no termination fee for CalPERS health.
Excellent, thank you. Anyone else wish to address this on this item? Seeing none, we'll return for a motion with regard to the acceptance of the report.
I move that we accept the very well-researched and presented report.
Second.
Move it second, roll call, please.
Councilmember Rushi.
Aye.
Councilmember Colin.
Aye.
Councilmember Gambler.
Aye.
Mayor Phillips.
I'm Medicare's four zero. Thanks, everyone. Thanks, Nadine. We'll now turn to, pardon me, five B, short-term rentals.
Good evening, Mayor Phillips and city council members. I'm going to start the discussion of this item tonight, and then I'm going to turn it over to Ethan Guy, our principal analyst, who has done a lot of hard work on this topic. The short-term rental topic, uh, was discussed by the council in February. At that time, you were given an informational report with a lot of information, and also, uh, at this point, we don't, uh, we don't prohibit, regulate, or tax short-term rentals, but what was presented in that report was three options. One is to maintain the status quo, second, to prohibit short-term rentals and actively enforce them, and third is to consider, uh, regulating and taxing short-term rentals. We were given the direction to complete some additional outreach, which, uh, Ethan will describe, also provide some additional information to see where we might want to go with this topic, and at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Ethan, and he'll summarize what's, what we've come up with. Thank you.
Great, thanks. Ethan.
Thank you, Paul. Um, so this is a longer presentation than my normal ones, so I'm going to try to get through it fairly quickly, but if I skip over anything, just let me know, I'm happy to go back. I'm going to spend most of my time discussing the survey results and the draft ordinance that, uh, that's in front of you. So, as Paul mentioned, in terms of background, uh, this really started in two thousand and sixteen, uh, when we were looking at, uh, short-term rental activity as part of our junior dwelling unit ordinance review. In two thousand and sixteen, staff was, um, directed to enter into a contract with host compliance to begin monitoring short-term rentals. At that time, we were really only looking at, um, trends and address identification. Uh, last year, in two thousand and eighteen, um, we came forth with a housing report, and one of the action items from that housing report was to provide an informational report on short-term rental activity. We came back in February nineteenth of this year, uh, to have that informational report, and as Paul mentioned, the three main takeaways from, uh, that meeting, um, were for staff to come back with expanded community outreach on short-term rental approaches, regulations, best practices, and options, to conduct further analysis on the impacts of short-term rentals on the housing stock in San Rafael, uh, conduct further analysis on the use of accessory dwelling units and JDUs as short-term rentals. And as Paul mentioned, today, we don't have any regulations on the books, uh, we don't regulate, tax, or enforce short-term rentals. So, where are we right now? Uh, right now, we have about two hundred and seventy-one active listings in the last twelve months. That's an average. Um, it changes month to month depending on people wanting to, to rent or not. That is a increase of, uh, from a hundred and fifty active listings when we first started monitoring in two thousand and sixteen. Um, as we discussed in the past, the, the main property type is a three-bedroom, single-family home. Right now, uh, the short-term rentals are distributed relatively equally geog, um, geographically. Uh, there's slight concentrations in the West End, Gerstel Park, and the Dominican neighborhoods, but that's also where we see the highest density of house, of homes. Over the last three years, the Community Development Department has received less than a dozen short-term rental-related complaints. That doesn't include police complaints, um, and part of the reasons for that is because we don't necessarily track specifically, this is an Airbnb, this is a VRBO we track, this is a noise complaint, this is, um, something else that police might respond to. So, in response to council, um, direction in February, uh, So in response to council direction in February, we developed a community engagement strategy comprised of conducting a community survey, meeting with stakeholder groups, and community meetings. Additionally, as part of that community outreach, we've been maintaining a website. If somebody wants to go and visit to see where we are, we've been posting all of our findings and all of our information on that website as well. So in terms of that community outreach, I'm not going to get into the specifics of what was discussed in these community meetings, but we've had five unique community meetings themselves. We had one in March, the 20th, with the Federation of Neighborhoods. On April 4th, we had a meeting with Airbnb hosts. On May 29th and 30th, we met with the community to discuss the survey results. And then finally, on June 18th, we met with the San Rafael Chamber of Commerce. The, the big action that we took as part of that community outreach was conducting a community survey. That community survey was open for a month, starting in March 22nd and going until April 22nd. That survey was made available in English and Spanish. Links to the survey were made available on the city's website, Facebook, Twitter, Nextdoor, the city email distribution lists, and were also referenced in an article published by the Marin IJ. During that month, we had 409 individuals take the survey, which is pretty good for a community survey. But while that is pretty good, it was not a random survey. It's whoever took the results. So as we go through these survey results, just keep in mind that these results reflect the individuals who took the survey themselves. So what does that mean? Respondents were asked several demographic questions, including age, race, homeownership, neighborhood of residence, tenure in San Rafael. The survey asked these questions to determine how representative the survey was as it reflects the San Rafael community. This information also helps staff better understand the communities we're reaching through our outreach methods, and that will help us kind of iterate on how we want to conduct community outreach in the future. Eighty-three percent of residents who took the survey identified as homeowners, compared to 52% of San Rafael households that identify as owner-occupied in the 2017 American Community Survey. Respondents indicated a wide range of tenure of people living in San Rafael, with 39% having lived in their current home for 15 or more years, and 27% living in their homes for one to five years. Eighty-one percent of respondents identified as white, which is compared to 65.9% of San Rafael residents identifying as white in the 2017 ACS. Thirty-four percent of respondents indicated that their age as 65 years or older, followed by 24% who identified as 55 to 64 years or older, and 23% that identified as 45 to 54 years or older. This is compared to the 2017 ACS, where it was 18% at 65 years or older, 11.5% at 55 to 64 years or older, and 15.1% at 45 to 54, 45 to 54 years or older. Respondents also indicated a broad distribution of neighborhoods represented, with no one individual neighborhood receiving more than 10%. The Montecito was the highest, but it was a pretty broad range. Overall, the survey found very little support for a short-term rental ban among respondents. Forty percent of respondents felt the city should allow but regulate short-term rentals, and 33% felt the city should leave short-term rentals unregulated. When we asked respondents if they were aware of any short-term rentals in their neighborhood, 56% or 228 respondents said yes. Of that, 56% of respondents who were aware of short-term rentals in their neighborhood, only 41% or 94 respondents said that short-term rentals had caused problems. When we asked that 94, those 94 respondents to describe those problems that they faced, lack of parking, strangers in the neighborhood, and noise complaints were the only options to receive a majority of responses. When we asked respondents about their levels of concern with a list of challenges related to short-term rentals, this is all respondents, for the, for most of the challenges listed, the number of individuals who are concerned about the issue, that's the blue bars, was smaller than the number of individuals who are not concerned, which is the green bars. Party houses was the only issue where the delta between those two bars was near zero. All others not concerned was the largest response. The trend also continued when we asked respondents how they would prioritize specific regulations. Five regulations really stood out, having the, a higher percentage of the single biggest major or major priority responses was greater than that not priority responses. Those five included limit the number of guests or occupants, require additional parking, require 24-hour local contact, require rules be posted in the rental, and require short-term rentals pass a safety inspection. We also wanted to know a little bit more about our short-term rental hosts, so we asked specific questions regarding that. We found that one-third of our respondents were active hosts or were considering hosting, and that the vast majority, 84% of that third, they live at their property that they would like to list. So that's about 104 of those individuals. When we looked deeper at that one-third of respondents, it was nearly equally split as the type of listing that they were renting, between whole house, a room in a house, or an ADU. When we asked why the hosts were renting, the financial reasons were the main drivers. When we asked hosts if they'd be willing to pay an additional, or would they be willing to pay an annual registration fee, 58% said yes. Not only would they be willing to pay a fee, but on average, hosts said they'd be willing to pay a fee of $121, and that even includes the individuals who said that they wouldn't be unwilling to pay a fee. The second part of what council records staff to look at was the impacts of short-term rentals on the existing housing stock. Staff really focused our attention on ADUs and JDUs. When staff compared, well, since 2000, the city of San Rafael has approved 137 permits for ADUs, JDUs, or second units. When staff compared these 137 permits to the 271 short-term rentals currently advertised in San Rafael, only 17 short-term rentals were on a property with an approved JDU, ADU, or second unit permit. Staff also conducted a full review of the 270 active listings, and we identified roughly 60 listings, including the 17 listings with approved permits that appeared likely to be an additional onsite unit. That distinction is some of the units that are short-term rentals, they're whole homes, they're not necessarily an ADU. So we wanted to go through every single listing to identify what may or may not be an ADU, JDU, second unit. While 17 were permitted, 43 are likely to be unpermitted for their current use. That being said, if ADUs and JDUs were prohibited from becoming a short-term rental, there's no guarantee that they would become long-term housing options. Even if the 43 potentially unpermitted short-term rental listings identified by staff required permitting, the market would dictate their suitability as a long-term or short-term housing. Due to these market forces, there's little incentive either for the city to prohibit the use of ADUs or JDUs as short-term rentals, or for a property owner to apply for permits on an ADU or JDU prohibited for short-term rental use. In the informational report, too, we included a draft ordinance. The draft ordinance is really based upon the community outreach and research that we've done since our February meeting. It's based on the minimal regulation model that we used off Mill Valley. So that means there's really only information in there for registration, fee payment, and TOT remittance. It is the most basic of regulations that you could put forth to both regulate and tax short-term rentals. So what does this mean? The draft ordinance includes the following amendments needed to the zoning code for short-term rental regulation. That includes adding a definition of short-term rentals to the zoning code. It includes amending the definition of hotel in the zoning code by removing multiple guest rooms from that definition, and amending the definition of home occupation to explicitly not apply to short-term rentals. It also means adding short-term rental as a def, as part of the definition of hotel to the TOT section of the municipal code. And it also means creating a new chapter, 10.110, the Short-Term Rental Program. In that new chapter, it would set forth the registration and fees necessary. Right now, we're estimating that to be $165 to be completely cost-recovering for an initial registration, and $130 for an annual renewal fee. It would also require hosts to collect and remit TOT, which is 10% for the city, and 2% that goes back to the county for all rentals. Additionally, it would require quarterly reporting for hosts. It's essentially just asking the number of delays for the short-term rentals. Sorry, the number of days a short-term rental has been used. It has some additional reporting requirements for hosting platforms, and also includes administrative enforcement procedures which are based upon Chapter 1.44 and 1.46 of the municipal code. Also included within the ordinance is reference to short-term rental program design and procedures. These would be separate from the ordinance themselves. It would be more administrative. To keep costs low, we would be suggesting having potential services provided through an expanded contract with host compliance or current provider. This would include short-term rental address identification, compliance monitoring, permitting and registration, rental activity monitoring and tax collection, and complaint hotline, which should be 24/7 and staffed through the, the compliance monitoring software service. Additionally, it would require short-term rental hosts to register through the host compliance software, and they would be required to provide the following: property information, including address, type of listing, occupancy, and number of parking spaces, business license registration, a vegetation management plan for properties that are within a wildlife urban interface, a 24-hour local emergency contact available to receive calls from the guests at any time, night, day or night, instructions for trash disposal to be provided to renters, information on the San Rafael noise ordinance requirements, and payment of fees and TOT. And I just want to stop there real quick to discuss one thing that was in the informational report, which was a voluntary compliance agreement. Staff has been in discussion already with Airbnb about what a potential VCA would be. Ultimately, what a voluntary compliance agreement is, is we would enter into a contract with the platform, Airbnb, VRBO, they all, they all offer them, and it allows the platform to collect and remit the TOT on behalf of the hosts. So it essentially removes a step and streamlines the process to make it a little bit easier. As of now, staff estimates first-year costs for administering this program, associated with the draft ordinance, to be approximately $40,000, and that includes the software costs and staffing costs. Additionally, these costs include staff time for conducting a short-term rental workshop and for the city attorney to develop a voluntary compliance agreement with the short-term rental platforms. Staff estimates annual ongoing costs of around $31,500. These costs would cover expanding the compliance monitoring services as well as ongoing staffing costs. Staff will be, will be able to limit hours needed for administrative tasks by utilizing the host compliance software. The increase in hours associated with a new program is anticipated to be covered by the existing staffing levels. Staff also analyzed the annual balances for all options. Given the low, mean, and high estimates for TOT revenue collection that we presented in the February 19th staff report, staff estimates that the city could collect anywhere between $18,000 and $105,000 in TOT in a given year. On average, TOT collection could be approximately $39,000 annually, and when combined with cost recovery and fees, the estimated program balance would be the same as the TOT collected. In the staff report, we also presented additional policy options for council consideration. These would be in addition to the program costs that we outlined. We do provide a general range of estimated program costs that, increase in program costs with each of these policy options. We will need to go back if any of these policy options are included as part of a council directive, to rethink through the cost, because there's going to be some modeling that needs to occur, there's going to be some economies of scale. So I just want to kind of set that up before I go to the next slide. Staff has categorized these policies into three levels of enforcement effort: low, medium, and high, and that's to be required to implement these additional regulations. Under the low enforcement effort, staff estimates these policies would increase costs by 10 to 25% per policy. That includes owner occupancy requirements, posting of emergency information in units, and also including ineligible use for properties with existing rental or residential restrictions. The medium enforcement effort, these are policies that would cost, would increase costs by 25% to 50% per policy, and these include a self-certification inspection to conduct life and fire safety. Additionally, it would set occupancy limits. And then third, you could have ineligible uses for non-permanent structures, and that includes RVs, boats, tents, yurts, anything that is not set on a foundation. Finally, there is a third category of high enforcement effort policies, and these would lead to a 50% increase in costs per policy. That would be an annual cap on nights rented, additional parking standards, including shared driveways, and then finally, ineligible uses, ADUs and JDUs. And I just want to hold there real quick to explain the ineligible uses piece of this. That would be if you were to add these regulations to the draft ordinance, it would be prohibiting those uses as a short-term rental. For staff recommendations, should the city council decide to move forward with short-term rental regulations and include additional policy elements, staff would support the inclusion of both the low enforcement and medium enforcement efforts. Should council decide to move forward with restrictions on ADUs and JDUs, staff supports allowing ADUs and JD, JDUs to be used for short-term rentals, only if the property is owner-occupied by the host, and the main house is not also registered as in a short-term rental. Including both requirements would align the short-term rental restrictions placed on ADUs and JDUs with existing owner occupancy restrictions for ADU and JDU planning permits. Staff does not support the inclusion of an annual cap on nights rented, or additional parking, or shared driveway standards. Additionally, staff seeks direction on whether to include in the definition of ineligible use for non-permanent structures, travel trailers without a motor or an engine, and that includes things designated as camp trailers or fifth-wheel trailers. Should the city council decide that travel trailers not be included as an ineligible use, staff seeks direction on whether additional regulations should be included for travel trailers, such as requiring separate and illegal water, power, and sewage connections, prohibiting generator use, mandatory safety inspections and additional fee for those inspections, off-driveway parking platform, additional off-street parking, and finally, limited street visibility of the travel trailer. What's forth, the, put forth the city council today is you have four options. You can accept the report and direct staff to return with a program design and corresponding draft ordinance. You can direct staff to return with more information, accept the report with no follow-up action, or finally, you cannot accept the report.
And thanks, thanks for preparing the, the comprehensive reports. You've done an excellent job, I would suggest. Thanks for doing so. Questions of staff? Question, Mary Beth?
What was your rationale for not recommending a cap on the maximum number of days?
The rationale is mostly around trying to identify how many days an actual short-term rental is rented. Currently, how host compliance uses their monitoring is through checking to see if a short-term rental is available or not available through that given platform. So it would be looking at Airbnb to see if what the change has been happening for that one specific short-term rental. The additional difficulty is that in jurisdictions that have tried to implement a cap, they haven't had much success, mostly because that has to be reported either through the individual who is trying to maintain the cap, so the host would have to report how many days in which they're renting, and so there's kind of a conflict of interest in their ability to report. Additionally, there's no real good policy evidence to figure out whether or not 90 days is the right number, 120 days is the right number, whether it's 150 days. There, there's not a sweet spot that we've been able to identify.
So I'm gathering the platforms are unwilling to cooperate?
Yeah.
That's pretty much the bottom line here.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Ethan. That report was very thorough, and appreciate the community that responded to the survey. One question, this is not really relevant to our decision today, but I'm so curious what the county does with their portion of the TOT tax. Does that benefit San Rafael? Or how does it benefit? I should phrase it that way. How does that benefit San Rafael?
My understanding is that it's, it's been longstanding, the 2% goes to the county, and ours, it goes for general fund purposes, and not particularly economic development or hotel-related or something like that. So my assumption is that theirs goes to the same place, but I'm, I'm not sure if there's, if you have any further information.
I, I think that the specific, I'm going to try to remember the, the definition of the acronym. It's the MCBIDTA. So it's the Marin County Business Improvement District Tax Assessment. So I'm, I think it goes back to the Business Improvement District.
Right. No, what I know is in there, maybe it's for when it comes back. I'd just be curious how that 2% of people here, how it benefits San Rafael. So... So if you could show up that nice graph that had the low, medium, and high enforcement, and I just wanted to have clarity, yeah, why there is in the medium enforcement, which you're suggesting that we go forward with, why is there a 25% to 50% increase in costs? Like a self-certification inspection, that to me seems like you contact the fire department, they fill out the material, and you submit it. So I'm confused if you could explain that.
Yeah, a lot of that has to do with our very low staffing assumptions. So right now, we're assuming about 80 hours in an annual year, I mean, per year to operate the program, which is in line with how Mill Valley operates their program. So the big difference would be we'd still need to send somebody out potentially to check on an inspection. We would still need to review the inspection to make sure that the inspection was accurate, completely filled out correctly. There's just an additional level of effort that to apply for 271 units might lead to a 25% increase. That may be less, but we weren't able to model specifically how much it would cost, yeah.
And maybe it's something also could be complaint-driven. A self-certification inspection, I mean, there's a level of trust here, and then if we feel something's not going on, at that point, we go out and inspect. But to me, it just seems like something else, a box that they're checking. I mean, you had the list, well, it was on the other list, of wildfire veg plan and all these other things they're already having to submit, so.
Yeah. Councilmember Colin, I'd love to just add a nuance to that as well because I think the idea of how much enforcement and what other things should we add is going to come up a lot tonight. So a little bit further background is that when we talk about enforcement, we have host compliance or some similar vendor like that in the future that we could be working with that has the data and could certify, yes, this person turned it in or they didn't turn it in. So that's an example of an enforcement where the host compliance does. And then we also have our code enforcement department, and we're fortunate to have our code enforcement manager, Anna Santiago, with us tonight. So if we get into questions of kind of like, what would code enforcement do with that, and how much time would that take and that sort of thing, Anna will be able to answer that. We have very small code enforcement staff, much smaller than it's been historically in the city. So what we're trying to look at here is, when it comes to each individual piece of enforcement, who does it? Is it going to be host compliance or is it us? And then how much will it actually add on to the cost? So does it make it cost prohibitive where the program no longer works? So we were trying to find a spot where we felt like we were doing as much of the enforcement as we could, putting as much on host enforcement as we could, taking on some ourselves that still allowed the program to run. So I'm sorry, that's not addressing your specific question, but I just wanted to give that background. So when future questions come up around enforcement, we can find out from Anna whether that's us in doing that or whether that's host compliance. Because my hypothesis is that host compliance doing it by looking at data is going to be much less expensive, I think to your point of a self-certification, than us sending a person out to review something or to make sure it's there.
Well, with the host compliance, that enforcement is proactive, and then the city can be reactive. I'm just, I'm just trying to think of, there's a combination. Host compliance is always checking everything that's in front of them, and then we, as we do now, already, the city already responds to complaints that come forward, and then we deal with it at that point.
If I may add to what Jim is saying as well, if you look at medium and high enforcement, that requires boots-on-the-ground enforcement, and that is not just enforcement, but checking our resources that a platform like Resource or Host Compliance does not have access to, which requires time. It would be like someone coming to our front counter and asking about information that we have to pull out of a file. So that is where it starts to cost money. And so it's more than just reacting, but it's being part of the initial screening.
That makes sense. Under the high enforcement effort, I did want to call out, and I understand 50% increase in costs, that seems like a lot. The shared driveways, because to me, I don't know how many shared driveways there are of the 271, how many have a shared driveway situation? That to me seems it could be very problematic for all the obvious reasons. So I'm curious of the 271, which ones, if we have two that are shared driveways, well, then I would be interested in including that in a policy, but if it's 80 or 100, so I just, it's more a comment, I guess, at this point than a question.
Yeah, so the first piece, it kind of feeds back into the shared driveway question. We don't know how many right now have a shared driveway within that 271. We don't collect that information through our host compliance. However, when we were looking into the parking standards in the shared driveway question, we compared our parking standards with other jurisdictions and found that our existing parking standards within the zoning code match up already to what other jurisdictions are requiring as their additional parking. So we're already there in terms of our existing zoning code. With the shared driveway, part of the reason why we included it within the high enforcement effort is the difficulty in defining specifically, at what level is this a shared driveway versus in a shared driveway? How much shared driveway? Is there a level that we can allow shared driveway that we can't allow? There was just a lot of gray area when we were looking into the shared driveway question. That's why we included it within the high enforcement option.
Okay. Well, I look forward to hearing from the public on that one. Thank you.
I just have a couple of questions, if you would. Then we'll turn to the public. On page 13, there's fiscal impact. I'm trying to relate this schedule, and maybe it's totally different, I'm not sure, but this schedule talks about expenditures under low, medium, and high end, which I guess I'm relating to this, and yet the numbers are virtually the same. So I think I'm reading this incorrectly.
Yeah, so the low, mean, and high-end projections relate to what we project in any given year in terms of the TOT. Since the TOT is going to fluctuate based upon the market and demand, we didn't necessarily want to project out for just the mean revenue estimates because some years we're going to have less people wanting to use short-term rentals, some years we may have high demand. The reason why the expenditures in the annual balance are, the expenditures stay the same is because the program would stay the same no matter the TOT projections. The annual balance is what would be reflected within the TOT collected in a given year.
Second, on this schedule, obviously we have various ranges, low, medium, and high. Are those ranges and the fees associated with those going to any way impact the number of participants?
To some extent, yes, because we would reflect the increased enforcement costs and the cost recovery fee. So if you add more, the fee would likely to increase, and there would always be some individuals on the margin who 165 might be their willingness to pay, but 170 might not be their willingness to pay.
Anyone from the public wish to address us on this item? Please, step up. Good evening.
My name is Chris Giel, and I am a host. I offer a room for rent in my home in San Rafael, and I've been doing it for about two years. And I did complete the survey, but I haven't been attending the meeting, so I might be coming in a little bit behind. But my main question is, what's the goal for the city for setting regulations? I mean, I'm sure there was a, we're thinking about short-term, or we're thinking about the housing market. We're thinking about loss of revenue, safety, and other factors, but none of those things seem to be very, very significant from the report that I just listened to. And so I'm thinking about the revenue for the city, $100,000 plus 10% tax, I guess. Is it really called for at this time, based on the potential impact to the homeowner in reporting, the time required for reporting, self-certification if that was to be implemented, and other issues that may cause the homeowner to decide not to do it, which would then result in loss of revenue for the city? I know for me, many of my guests spend a lot of money in San Rafael because it's available. They can afford to come and stay here because of this option. So I'd just sort of like to know what the goal really is, and is it worth all of this bureaucracy?
Good question, and if it's okay, we'll collect their questions if there are others, and then address them all in one setting. I'm sure Ethan or perhaps Paul are glad to. If you could, yeah.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Sandy Luna. I am a Gerstle Park resident and have been since 2015. I'm a homeowner, and I have the unique experience of, I've been a licensed realtor for 15 years, and I used to manage vacation rentals in San Diego, San Francisco, and Lake Tahoe from San Francisco. And so I learned that you can definitely screen out problem tenants by picking up the phone and finding out who they are, what they're doing, what are their plans for their vacation. You can tell immediately if it's a 21-year-old birthday party or is the family gathering because grandpa's turning 80? And do they intend to have the party in the resident, or are they going to a restaurant? I also want to point out that if you have a bad neighbor, they don't leave. They're there every day. Whereas if you have a bad vacationer, they're gone in a few days. Many people rely on short-term rentals for income because we have high property purchase prices, we have high property taxes, and we have high cost of repairs. An owner of a vacation rental is always going to take care of their property. They have to keep the yard neat. They have to make repairs, or you get bad reviews online. So you actually have very diligent owners that are putting their property up for rent. I also want to point out that vacation rentals are historic and they're international. I've stayed in things like Airbnb before it was called Airbnb since 1990, and whether it was a room in a house or an entire unit. That said, controls and guidelines are important. I think the occupancy number is your number one important thing because, you know, you have owners who say that the couch, the chair, the floor, there's an air mattress, and you've got 10 people living in one unit, which obviously it wasn't recommended. I do want to say that it's not good to limit the number of nights because what happens is, especially in this neighborhood, I'm sorry, I'll be quick, but you actually have people using these to live. You've got fire victims right now that are living in these. You've got traveling nurses. You've got people who are buying or selling homes and need, or remodeling and need a place to live. So it's not always a weekend. Sometimes they need it for three months, and the cap would hurt that. Thank you.
Excuse me, thanks for your comments. Anyone else? Yes.
First, I wanted to say good evening, and my name is Jonna Grimm, and thank you all for your help in this project. I'm here to ask the council to adopt the short-term rental program as defined on the pages 68 through 74 of your packet with the addition of travel trailers within multi-use zones such as ours downtown. We recommend the additional regulations for travel trailers listed on page 11 be included in the ordinance. Pages 122 through 126 and 140 through 141 describes our airstream. After a highly successful 90-day trial, the interest in staying in a classic, American-made airstream proved highly desirable. More importantly, it's an excellent promotion for downtown San Rafael, reflected in our 100% five-star ratings. Our neighbors have been supportive. They've thanked us for the work we've done upgrading our lot over the past six years since we owned it, and extensive remodel of our duplex, installation of gardens, and they're excited to have their visitors stay in our airstream. We anticipate generating 2,700 in occupancy tax for the city annually, not including the 2% for the county. And while doing that, we would make enough money to pay our property taxes and to be able to stay living in San Rafael. Our motto is "Come for the airstream, stay for San Rafael." This is a good thing for downtown, for our neighbors, and certainly for us. Thank you for your consideration.
And thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Several.
Yes, my name is John Perry. I live in the Canal area. And I would just want to address that this short-term rental could be a problem, maybe. There's a great density now in the Canal area, and with this turnover, we, this is a growing business because it is profitable. But it's, my neighbors now are into this. I have new guests, so to speak, in the neighborhood two and three times a week. They're turning over. I just have one from Airbnb on 12, on one of the addresses. They had a great party for 30 people. How many of you would like to have that turnover twice a week, 30 people next to you? It's going to eventually decrease the value of our homes if this continues to grow at this rate. I mean, this is the density. Now, the other problem is you've made great strides in the parking in the Canal area. This is a step backwards. If you have 30 people on a party, where are you going to put all these cars? You have these parking regulations now that you have to rotate cars, but that is, it's working well, but it isn't because what they're doing now is three or four people live in one apartment, they switch cars in the morning. So, you know, they've, they've found a loophole, which is understandable. There's just, there's too many people. The parking is a real problem. So, and, you know, on this one community thing, I'm sure the San Rafael Police, I don't know how many times they've been called because of the parties late at night. How many, it's, it's, there has to be some sort of control or some limit. Sausalito just recently, I think, passed a 30-day rule, didn't they? Had a minimum of 30 nights. I'm not sure. Is that correct?
A ban. They banned short-term rentals.
Well, they banned them? I thought it was for a minimum of 30. So maybe something of this nature, a minimum, maybe that's an extreme. I understand that people that want to go on a vacation, and maybe they want some help to pay for it if they're gone 20 days, sure. But to rotate them three and four times a week, that's, I think there's some things to be done there. And if the police are called, if my alarm goes off two or three times, I get fined. If the police are called because of these parties, there's no fines or there's no penalties because of the enforcement anyhow. Thank you for your time.
Thanks for your comments. Next, please. Now.
Good evening. Good evening, and thank you very much for giving us an opportunity to do this. I'm basically following up on John Perry's issues with that one particular Airbnb. There are five in this area. If you look on that handout I gave you, it's a brochure, the neighborhood is on tab B, and it'll show you what the neighborhood actually looks like. We're talking specifically about one B and B. That's a party house. They have groups of 20 to 30 people regularly coming and just having loud, rambunctious, boisterous activities. And the fact that the large groups, it's being marketed as it is, on tab A will show you the reviews of the people, the guests that have stayed there, and some have complained. But the place is marketed as 10 people and then four people in a boat. And it's marketed as group tourists and special events. It's a residential area. It's not a commercial area. If you look at tab C, you'll see a B and B behind their B and B, and that's right next to John Perry's house. And it just shows you a large table setting. I've circled around it. And then tab D is showing you the egregious use of, without any safety. We're on the water, so you've got people without life preservers, people that are rowing boats with sticks, and there are boots that go up and down this canal. And these people are a hazard to bona fide boaters. And then I wanted to go over and take pictures of the mold growing on the boat that they, that they ran out to four people. And that would be tab E, and that specifically shows you mold on the boat. And then as I got a little closer, there's black mold. And my question, if you look at that, are they using holding tanks? Or are they going directly into the canal with their sewage? It doesn't look like this person is maintaining this house, this boat to the requirements of BCDC. So she's taking advantage of everybody and lowering our property values.
And thank you for, thanks for your comment. Any, yes.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and staff. My name is Susan Henshaw. I'm a 22-year homeowner in San Rafael. I live in the Portobello community, and I think I experienced the same issues that these two gentlemen just spoke about. It just, and I applaud your recommendations. I really encourage the council to consider the recommendations, in particular, the policy about owner occupancy. In particular, the policy about owner occupancy. This home that we're speaking about is a forty-four-hundred-square-foot property, and it is not owner-occupied. Night after night after night, there is a different group of people occupying that space. And what began as a tranquil environment has turned into a community nightmare. So I just encourage you to think about how you would like to experience that day after day after day. And I really encourage you to accept the recommendations here. Thank you.
Thank you, and thanks for your letter, by the way. Evening.
Good evening. Thanks very much for having this on the docket. My name is Dean Gudani. I am also a homeowner at Portobello, the community there. I was interested when I took a look at Vice Mayor McCullough's bio. He had a very interesting quote in the bio. He said, "It's his intent on addressing concerns of all residents with special focus on public safety, efficient service delivery, and quality of life issues." What we're talking about is twelve-litre lane, nine-sorrental court, they're within seventy-five yards or a pitching wedge of our backyard. And these are life and public safety issues for us. I know Councilwoman Collins, you have two children, our next-door neighbors have two children. They can't go out on their deck because there's so much swearing, cursing, abusive behavior, people throwing up in the canal, people jumping off the boat in the canal, people doing things that somebody's either going to drown, there's going to be a problem. I am an Airbnb user, I enjoy Airbnb, but not how it's being used this way. I would urge you to take a look at what Sausalito was doing right now for a ban, but also take a look at what's happening in regards of maybe looking at different property types. If somebody says that they're renting out an island villa, that's not for people to come in town for a few days. That's for people to throw a thirty-person DJ on-site screaming loud abusive festival. I called the San Rafael Police on Saturday, made a noise complaint. I know they were very busy, they do their best. By the time they got there, people had calmed down. I don't know if they were tipped off. But this is ongoing. This has been happening for the twelve years I've lived in Portobello, and now with Airbnb it's ramped up. We're looking essentially at six to twelve different events every month, and now we have a second Airbnb. So we're being triangulated. And it's just essentially destroying our kind of calm community. So anything you can do to bring some kind of order to this, we'd greatly appreciate. Thank you.
And thanks for bringing to our attention. Next, yes, please.
My name is Chris Ward, and I live at, on Lincoln Hill. And my, my family, we're renters, but we have special permission from our landlord to Airbnb, the bottom unit. And we do that because my daughter, who's three, she needed open heart surgery. And my husband, who lost his job, needed some time to build a new business from scratch. And I'm going back to school for grad school. So we, it has been a godsend for us to be able to have permission to do an Airbnb. It's, it helps us with rent. We have taken incredible care of the property. We have made it immaculate, like these other hosts. We have a hundred percent five-star reviews, thirty-two of them, and we have been renting it for a year now. What I do is I, there's a listing or a checkbox on there where it says, you know, what are the house rules and what do you require? And we can, we say, no parties. And we say, this is a family property, we live upstairs, these are the times our kids go to bed. And you know, if you just lay out the rules clearly, there's even an extra hoop that we make them jump through that says, if you request to book this property, you know, I'll go on and read your reviews, and you have to write me a paragraph that says your intent, who you're coming with, and that you understand the rules of this house. And it works beautifully. And in fact, the downstairs is, it is sort of a mother-in-law suite, does have a kitchen and two bedrooms. And upstairs, you know, there's, there's a chance we may even rent the upstairs and move downstairs because we need that extra help right now. And we've gotten that from the owner. So I just wanted to give you one more perspective, that within the platform itself, you can control those things and make sure that you don't have too many people and that you're getting the right people in there. So, thank you.
And thanks for your comments. Yes. Good evening.
Hello, good evening. My name is Nancy Callahan, and I'd also like to just throw in my opinion and approval about the Airbnb and VBR situation. It is a rather, it can be controlled. This one particular unit in the Portobello neighborhood, it sounds like a nightmare, and I sympathize with these people. But most, to put a ban on the whole situation where a lot of these homes are owner-occupied, and so being that they are owner-occupied, that, you know, there's, there's a way of keeping control of the orderly coexistence that might go on in this neighborhood. So I think it's, it's a great opportunity for, to help a lot of people in dire need. And it's a very controllable situation. So thank you for my input and my time.
And thank you. Anybody else? Couple.
My name is Charlie Camella. I live on Ninety-four Jewel Street in the Montecito area, and I've lived in my home for forty years, and I am one of those unfortunate individuals that share a driveway with someone who does Airbnb. My neighbor that we share the driveway with has two units that they rent out almost nightly. We've kept records, and over the past two years, they've rented over six hundred nights a year. That's not your regular short-term rental. That's more like a motel. And it seems unfair and unreasonable that that kind of activity should go on in a residential neighborhood. I know that the staff says it's going to be difficult to regulate the number of nights or to regulate shared driveways. I sort of disagree. I don't think that's a high enforcement effort. I would agree with Councilman Collins, that this could be complaint-driven. It's pretty simple to look at a driveway and determine if it's shared or not. And it's, basically, it's been an awful experience for us with this shared driveway. And I'm also concerned it's going to lower the value of my house. We have strange cars and people driving up the driveway every night, all hours of the day and night. Their lights shine right into our house. We have these big-picture windows. They beep their horns at three in the morning. We have safety issues. We're concerned about our privacy, obviously, and we have liability issues because we share the driveway. I would like the council to consider banning short-term rentals in shared driveways and to monitor the number of nights that people are renting. That's pretty easy to do. I mean, if you're going to monitor the tax, then you have to know how many nights people are renting. They should be keeping a record of every night that they rent and the amount that they're collecting. That's how they're going to pay that tax. And lastly, I'd like to make some comment on the survey done by the staff. That survey was pretty highly biased and I believe flawed. Not only was the respondents, they weren't randomly selected, these were people who had an interest, they were people who basically had an interest in short-term rentals, one way or the other. The other problem is, this was a very, very small sample. Little over four hundred people represents less than one percent of the population of San Rafael. Such a small sample size makes any conclusions statistically invalid. So I think that report needs to be looked at more carefully. Thank you.
And just a moment, please. And I think they qualified, it wasn't a statistically sample that was taken, and therefore the validity can't necessarily be relied upon, but certainly an indication.
Yes, but they're presenting this report as if this is the facts.
Well, I think they qualified it to put you on guard. Mayor, about that's a question.
I have a question on a completely different topic. Returning to your description of the burdens that you have experienced with your neighbors renting out, have you submitted any complaints to the platforms that they list their rental on?
It's very difficult to make complaints to Airbnb. They have a self-supporting system. They receive reviews from the host and also from the people renting. They pretty much ignore any kind of complaints by the general public.
But have you submitted them?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And we've gotten no response.
And this is probably, doesn't apply, is my guess, but you're talking about your neighbor. Have you talked with your neighbor about this?
We don't talk anymore. Yes, we have, yes.
I assume that might be the case, thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Next person, please.
My name is Susan Probst, and I am a homeowner here in San Rafael. I attended the April meeting with Ethan. It was very nicely done. We had at least twenty-five homeowners who attended. Out of the number of residents in San Rafael, two-hundred-and-seventy-eight short-term rentals is not a huge number. But obviously, we have a lot of different situations that go on here, and it's, I can really empathize with the people that are suffering in their neighborhoods. In my situation, for example, we have a lovely home with three parking spaces. My neighbors are aware of what we do, and I even encourage them to speak to our visitors, who are few and far between. But if I have visitors from England, and I have a neighbor from England, I encourage them to meet. Our neighborhood has no problem with it. These guests actually spend a lot of money in San Rafael. And I do not believe that San Rafael is a destination city. We are not located that way. People come here for events, for graduations, for many things. And I do have some people that come because they don't choose to stay in the city. But I would encourage you to look at ordinances that might help with noise, safety. I'm not sure that long-term housing is going to be served by doing away with short-term rentals. It doesn't appear so. Obviously, we have some problem areas here in the city that could be taken care of in different ways. And Airbnb has a lot of quality controls that the owner has to, or should, implement. I meet my guests. We have rules published everywhere. So I would just ask you to take the, you know, take all the recommendations into consideration. Banning them, really, I hope not. Charging too much money may cause people to not come here. And that's a loss of revenue for the homeowner, but it's also a loss of revenue for San Rafael. So thank you.
And thank you. I think you might be successful this time in making your way up. It looked like a challenge out there. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is John Lewis, and I'm an Airbnb super-host and a business owner of a separate business here in San Rafael as well. Lifelong Marin native. I host guests in my home, and professionally, I manage Airbnb listings for other property owners as well. Airbnb income helps me to live here in one of the best places in the world and one of the most expensive places in the world. I host a steady stream of well-behaved guests from around the world who are stimulating the local economy and adding to local culture. My guests are teaching and training, and attending trainings at Boot Coffee, Tamalpa Dance Institute, NLP of Marin Coaches Training Institute, as well as I get workers from local companies and people who are contracted to work here. Many of my guests are on a budget and would not be able to afford local hotels. If anything, I'm overly conscious of the impact of my guests on the neighborhood. I screen my guests carefully and stay on, take care to, stay on top, make sure we have no issues with parking and noise. Are they strangers? Perhaps. I choose to look at strangers as potential future friends rather than people to be feared. I was struck by the small number of complaints lodged with the city over the last couple of years, twelve complaints. I understand that Airbnb guests can cause issues with noise and parties. Number of occupants should be addressed, and party houses should be disallowed. Everyone has a right to quiet enjoyment of their home. Problems with short-term rentals are the exception rather than the rule, though, as I believe this report has shown. It's my opinion that these nuisance issues can be handled on a case-by-case basis by implementing a few basic rules. In five years, I'll wrap up here, in five years of hosting hundreds of guests, I've had exactly zero significant issues with guests or neighbors. And adding, and you know, adding more costs and fees and regulations will limit the amount of guests who come to San Rafael and hurt local businesses in the long run. Thank you.
And thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Linda Krueger, and I have a shared driveway. And with my husband, it has been an absolute nightmare. Originally, I thought, well, maybe if the city was willing to regulate the number of nights, I would tolerate that. But now that you're considering not regulating the number of nights, then I think it should be a ban like they've done in Sausalito. I mean, our neighbor, every night, it's not like, oh, three to four nights a week or an occasional weekend, it's every night, seven nights a week, two separate units. All these cars coming up and down our shared driveway, and I don't know how he thinks we don't have a shared driveway because we both come up and down it to get to our house. I just find it unbelievable. I don't know what else to say, except you really need to consider this whole thing. Why all these other cities are looking at it and putting bans on it or regulating it? There's a reason for it. It's taking over our neighborhoods. It's a commercial business, and I don't know why you're not looking at it as a commercial when, you know, they're offering coffee and all these other amendments or things in their units. And it's just getting ridiculous. And I just hope that you will reevaluate what you're saying and definitely ban the driveway. And that's all I have to say.
And thank you.
My name is Lee Dorfman, and I am a super-host in San Rafael. We own our home, we live in our home, we heavily regulate everybody that comes into our home. We have more rules than most Airbnb people would have. But we insist on quiet, we restrict parties, we restrict the number of people that are allowed to stay in our home. We have an entire page of rules about what to do with garbage, recycling, paper, garbage, everything. We go overboard. The neighbors are behind us. We don't have a parking problem. Everybody's happy, and we don't have any issues. I know there's some issues with some neighborhoods. I don't think Airbnb or short-term rentals is necessarily the crux of that problem. I think there's an issue where there's other ways to enforce it. We would not be able to stay in San Rafael and stay in our home if it were not for the income that we get from the short-term rentals. We did try to rent out the other part of our house on a long-term basis, and the fact that we were there too, just, it didn't work. So this was what worked for us. Thank you.
Thanks.
My name's Sean Terhiden, and I am a resident of Ninety-eight Jewel Street. You've heard a lot from our neighbors who have spent thousands of dollars on lobbying the council members through their attorney and through their persistent efforts to ban short-term rentals. I want to make a couple of things clear. We, just like many other hosts, are extremely diligent about the processes in which we use to vet our guests. Now, we don't allow parties. I think that that's atrocious, and my sympathies go out to people like that in the Canal District. So we're very careful about that. We are owner-occupied. Our units are non-long-term rentable. They don't have kitchens, so they're separate spaces. And we've had zero issues with our guests. We've not had the police called on our guests. But what we have had, and I hate to say this, is two years of an absolute nightmare with our neighbors who have made it their vendetta and personal mission to make our lives a living hell. We have had to endure the Comellas walking, trespassing across our property line dozens of times as observed by our security camera in the middle of the night, photographing into vehicles, photographing into our yard, staring at our house and in our yard and our private backyard space with binoculars. It's been, it's been unbelievable. The Comellas have never called the police on our guests, but they have called the police but they have called the police twice on my wife and I. And we have a four-month-old child now, they've called the police and in fact, it's been registered with the San Rafael Police Department that they've used police as a method to harass us. They've also rallied the neighbors. I've had several neighbors approach me indicating that the Comellas have tried to tarnish our reputation in the neighborhood and in an effort to achieve their means. The shared driveway is an issue that is non-enforceable. It would be discriminatory. How would you enforce that in terms of duplexes, apartment complexes? And furthermore, in terms of our situation, what we have is a public right-of-way. Our guests come up a public right-of-way, they park entirely on our own property. They don't enter the Comellas residence or property at all. So I just want to make sure that the council understands and is not influenced, is not influenced without understanding the true facts here. I thank you for your time.
And thanks, thanks for your comments. Evening.
Every time you think there are no more.
I know, I'm not going to ask anymore, anybody else? That doesn't work.
My name's Timothy Snead and I also live in the Canal District. And we host, can you hear me? There you go. I was happy to see that you guys have a staff that was really more fair than a lot of cities that I've seen conduct these kind of reports. Pleasantly surprised, actually. I was actually a little shocked, but anyway.
They're all that way.
I wish. I want you to, some things, I want to try to help this situation. I'm a host. And there's some things I think that you need to know that are not, I think aren't coming out and there's no reason for you to know because it's kind of specialized knowledge. It's been alluded to some of the positive impacts on the community in terms of economics. People that stay in hotels don't go to our farmers markets, they don't go to our local markets. They don't shop as much, they don't go rent bikes, they don't go rent kayaks, this kind of thing. And I think that it's very hard to measure, but there's a lot of income there that you would lose in damaging this kind of activity. That's been going on, let's all, if you think about it, before hotels existed. This isn't something new that is just Airbnb came up with this idea. The regulation and the TOT, I hate to see communities that do use host compliance. And I see the point in some of the data that you're reaching, it's important. But the money spent in collecting is unnecessary. I think, I would like to be able to talk more to somebody about, Airbnb does most of this for you if you ask. And if you require hosts to do certain things, they will require that. From guests, from hosts. Airbnb will kick guests out, absolutely. I highly doubt that somebody actually talked to somebody at Airbnb that they would contact the host instantly. I have done it, I have had hosts banned, I have had guests banned. It's not that hard to do. And banned for life. Like you have a nasty party, you've been ridiculous, you've been asked to leave, you don't leave, you're banned, they won't let them back on Airbnb. They have their driver's license, they have their social security number, they're not getting back on. We provide parking so that we don't impact the street parking. That's something that can be required. The noise, that can easily be solved with technology that is available to hosts. Strangers, these strangers are more vetted than anybody else that's walking around your neighborhood.
Could you wrap it up?
Yeah. Anyway, I just think that there's a lot, I want to try to help and I want to provide more information that would help you make a decision that is obviously generate public interest and it may become something of a trial for you guys to come up with a solution here.
And thank you for your input. Okay, I'm going to try one more time. Anyone else? See, no one, turn to council. But before, there were a few questions that were asked or situations presented, perhaps you.
I would be happy to respond to the comment of what is our goal and purpose here? And I'm going to step back first. Staff is not, we're certainly not in the position to ever want to add work to our workload, permits, registrations, enforcement, et cetera. Four years ago, we started monitoring short-term rentals because everyone was hearing about short-term rentals. And as you heard through the course of the last four years, we've received very few complaints. So there was really never any reason for us to bring forward what is brought forward to you this evening. However, when this topic was raised with the city council, you wisely asked us to do some additional outreach because the meeting we had, the informational meeting with the three options of, don't do anything, prohibit, or regulate, we just had very few people in the audience. So you wisely asked us to do some outreach and I can tell you, Ethan set the bar on how outreach should be done and I'm concerned because we may have to, we may have to continue doing that with other things. But it was a very good outreach program. And I think what you see tonight are comments from people, a testament to that outreach because these are people we haven't heard from before. And I think that had a lot to do with us coming up with the recommendation to regulate and in the form that's presented. So that's the goal and purpose.
And thanks for adding to that.
If you have anything to add? Okay.
Ethan, there were a few questions. And specifically, I'm curious about the party. What can we do to perhaps either curtail, eliminate, or modulate that activity?
So based upon our understanding of the property to date is, it's not an owner-occupied property. So the natural one would be imposing some sort of owner-occupancy restrictions. Additionally, some of the complaints that we've received during the public comment have also included a high number of individuals being able to stay at the property. The owner-occupancy requirements that we discussed in terms of some of the additional efforts could also address that. Right now, those owner-occupancy requirements would state that for any bedroom, which would have two forms of Vgress, it would have CO2 and smoke monitoring, you'd be able to have two people per bedroom and then two in the open space. So based upon a review of that property, I think they have six bedrooms that would qualify. So they would have, if you place owner-occupancy, or if you placed occupancy requirements, that'd be a maximum of fourteen people. Then there are the ineligible uses on non-permanent structures, so that would be the boat and having additional regulations surrounding the boat. I was also discussed in terms of the public comment is surrounding regulation and enforcement of complaints. So how most jurisdictions set up their administrative procedures includes a three-strike ban. This is something we discussed in February, which is ultimately if you've received three complaints within a given amount of time, you lose your good standing with the program itself and lose your ability to participate in the program. So you'd lose your registration and you'd lose your ability to operate within the city limits. What those specific requirements would be set, we could look into those, a policy like that as well. That's also a policy that is in the literature put out by Airbnb, VRBO, something that they also support, is a three-strike ban.
No questions, Mary Beth?
I have questions. I don't understand why the platforms themselves aren't doing more. Why do we have to count up the three strikes? Why does, and I'm very concerned that we're going to let this one highly problematic property drive our decision-making. You know, non-permanent structures, there's this apparently mold-covered boat and yet there's an airstream that apparently people want to stay in, that everyone loves. So if we, you know, we don't want to be too heavy-handed and driven by the one bad instance. So let's go back to what is our relationship with the platforms? How can we leverage them? What can we make them do to enforce this? Because after all, they're the ones making money off of this.
That's a great question. And part of the issue has been that we have not had that relationship one-on-one with the platforms themselves because we don't have regulation in place. We have, as part of this outreach, reached out directly to those platforms to let them be aware of what's going on and they've been very receptive in terms of our discussing of voluntary compliance agreement regulations and setting up meetings themselves. So there is that line of communication that does exist. But we can always do a little bit more. I think some of that is, what I've heard in the public meetings that we had was that the Airbnbs and the VRBOs, they self-regulate in terms of being able to ban host comply, or being able to ban specific guests or rating of guests and rating of properties, there is some self-regulation there. But that's just anecdotal. I don't know for sure how effective those means are when it comes to a citywide regulation.
Got a great idea for you. Do you have contact information for someone from these platforms? Where this particular property is enlisted?
Yep.
Get on the phone or on the email to them immediately and tell them that a public hearing, resident, numerous residents stood up and testified to the problems that are being caused in that neighborhood by that property that has gone on for a long time. And that, as a result of these statements and problems caused by this property that they're listing, the entire city might, is considering banning these types of, these types of rental arrangements. And let's see what they do. This is, this is the lever that we need to, that we need to flip because it costs us nothing. And we can target it only at the problem campers, to use a pun, but, and let the others who are using it to facilitate their ownership of homes in San Rafael in quiet ways that are respectful of their neighbors, we can allow them to continue in their endeavors, but we can get at these problem campers quickly and with the lever that they will listen to, and that is the platforms.
To follow up on what Mary Beth was talking about, the particular, the problem rental area or place that's been brought up, that would be prohibited, though, because it's not owner-occupied. So it already would be not a part.
Well, the trouble with the owner-occupied, the owner has to be there all the time?
No, no, no.
No, no, the owner-occupancy requirement would just be that you need to be, you need to show that that is your main permanent property. So you don't have to be there at the time of the rental. You would just need to have a homeowner's occupancy tax exemption. You need to have utility bills, you'd have to prove your residency to that.
You couldn't have a business of having six of these?
No, no.
Okay, that's really what it is.
Right, right. And it was interesting because in the staff report, I think you alluded to that. So I think we probably all went on Airbnb to look at it. And it definitely is an outlier. And I agree with Mary Beth, having our policy because of that outlier. But I'm convinced that having the owner-occupancy and the other thing you've talked about would have that issue go away because that's not the way that, it's not right for the community, it's not right for the community across the water. And, I mean, you just look at the price points, it's ten X what everybody else is charging. It's a completely different animal, so I agree with you on that one. I did want to, if you could ask, talk a little bit more around the travel trailers, though, because there was also links to that and I think we had the owner come and speak to that. You know, and I'm always impressed when someone makes the effort to talk to their neighbors and say, hey, my neighbors are interested in this, they appreciate that I've done this. So is there a way, the regulation as you're proposing, would it prohibit specifically, you know, that type of offering?
Yes, I'm going to go back to this slide, if only because it kind of outlines it a little bit more. So within the definition that we proposed for ineligible use for a non-permanent structure, we included recreation vehicles. There is a distinction within RVs. Those that have a motor and those that don't have a motor, essentially, can you drive it? Can you not drive it? And so that kind of distinction falls within the definition of a travel trailer. So a camp trailer, the definition used by the DMV, a camp trailer is a trailer that you can inhabit, inhabit, but it may have a canvas side, it may not be a hard siding. Whereas like a fifth-wheel trailer would be an airstream or it would be a more robust structure itself. Within that, part of the regulations that we were trying to look into as part of if you wanted to make a distinction between RVs and travel trailers would be ensuring some baseline life and fire safety in regulations. So that could include requiring separate legal water, power, and sewage connections.
Okay, so we're just, we're exploring what the options are here and I think we all agree that probably less, if we go forward with some sort of regulation, less is more because we can always add it on later. So I would be inclined to allow the airstream type, however you want to define it, sorry, I got lost in some of that definition, to allow that to begin with and to see what happens. I do believe in having these complaint-driven. I think our community, we can't be everywhere. I mean, we don't have the staff, you know, and it would be impossible. And I think having the three strikes that was not mentioned in the staff report, that was interesting to me, like, that's a complaint-driven, that's what we're talking about. So I'd be interested in looking at that further. And I'm still very concerned about the shared driveway. I mean, obviously, there's huge tension, you know, among these two neighbors, which, you know, I'm sure all of us can feel it and understand how that's difficult for both of them. And a shared driveway, to me, and I know you understand, you said it was hard to define. If it's a single-family home versus a multi-unit, multi-units, to me, there is a way to define it. And I think the shared driveway is, it's going to be problematic. I just, and I'd be interested to see what my colleagues say about that. I just, I do not understand how you can have it work for both parties when there's a shared driveway.
Thank you, John.
Yeah, and I don't speak to know the specifics on the one-shared driveway that was requested, but I would imagine that you could look at it from a definition of where, if there's access to parking and it's shared to get, you know, if I view this as a Y and one driveway comes up and it splits off into two Ys, as long as the people that are going to this one part of the Y here are not infringing on this part of the one Y here, then the shared driveway is just a means of access to get to that. So if they're not, if they're not coming over and blocking the person's ability to get to their place by parking on that shared driveway or that accessway, then I, again, not knowing the specifics of this one place, but if that, and kind of what I'm envisioning, that they don't have just one driveway and then house, house, and that's it, and where they would be impacting the other people's ability to get to their property, I think that could be fairly well-defined. Question on the use of the travel trailers or airstreams when it comes to the owner-occupancy. If we put in an owner-occupancy piece, is that travel trailer required to be that person's residence as well? And if it is, if, that's one thing. But if we put in an owner-occupancy with that, in a sense, knock that, make that one not eligible?
So the owner-occupancy would be applied to the parcel itself? So it's not necessarily the space, whether it's the house? It could be if they're living in the main house and the trailer's in the back, as long as they're living on that parcel and they're claiming that homeowner's tax exemption or whatever?
Okay, and then someone brought up the point of, you know, for the recent fire victims and having, you know, thirty-day, sixty-day, ninety-day stays at these places. So if the owner-occupancy requirement is there, does that mean the owner would not, I mean, if these people are renting out the house, the entire house for those thirty or sixty or ninety days, or even shorter, and the owners, that's, I can't, unless they're leaving or have another place, I would imagine some of these are rental homes that people are, is not their primary residence. Would those now be excluded or not allowed to do that? Would they not be allowed to provide that place? If, you know, say I own a home on H Street and I own another home on J Street and my J Street home, I'm renting out to a fire victim for ninety days, would that not be eligible anymore? Under that, if you put an owner-occupancy requirement on that? Because that's not my primary residence, my primary residence is a block away.
I would need to look at the specific circumstance, but in most of the scenarios and where we've seen these longer, longer, shorter-term rentals, the occupancy requirement hasn't been an issue. Given oftentimes, if it is that longer residence, if we're talking over thirty days, it's usually a space within the home or it's an additional room within the house or an ADU or a JDU type of situation. It's not always the whole-home rental. Where we've seen the longer whole-home rental, and again, this is anecdotal based upon what we've heard from the hosts themselves, are often the case where it's a professor who's gone for the summer and they're using their home while they're away for the summer, while school's out. In those instances, you may again have a ninety-day scenario, but it's still a primary residence. The person just may be traveling or staying with friends, something else.
So of the local surrounding communities that have enacted short-term rental ordinances, So of the local surrounding communities that have enacted short-term rental ordinances, do all of them have the owner occupancy requirement? Because I know of, like, for example, Calistoga, for example, I know of people that own property in Calistoga that's not their primary residence, they live in Marin, and they have short-term rental. And that's perfectly fine within the Sonoma County's ordinance to do so. So is that, is that, is that a common thing to require that?
It's one of the more common regulations. In jurisdictions that decides to add additional regulations onto that base regulation, that's a part of the draft ordinance, usually the first one that gets added is an owner occupancy.
And is that, is that, the reason behind that, is that mostly to keep the rental housing stock at a certain level for longer-term rentals, you know, year leases or typical house rentals?
Yes, I think a lot of it also has to do with the ability to kind of manage and to enforce and to make sure that it's not turning into a party home or that kind of next level of issue.
And Paul, this might be for you as well. Do we have anything on the books, and I apologize for not, for not knowing this, but do we have anything on the books that says that a person that owns a single-family home in the city limits of San Rafael has, and they want to rent it out themselves? I mean, it might be a lot of work, but they have to have it for a specific lease, the initial lease of that is for a specific time? You know, can someone say, I've got this house and I just want to rent it out for 30-day lease at a time and can follow the requirements regarding eviction and things like that if they wanted to?
No, we don't have anything like that in the books now. The only, the only thing we have in the books regarding owner occupancy is with regard to our accessory dwelling units and junior units. And that's the owner occupancy provision that the owner must live either in the primary residence or the, or the second unit. It's the only thing, nothing tied to duration of rental.
I'm just, I'm just trying to think of, you know, if we put in something that says owner occupancy, what does that do for people that are not necessarily participating in a Airbnb, VRBO, homestay-type program, but are just, you know, Craigslist or whatever, doing it all themselves and doing it for 15 days or 20 days? Or how would we, how would we necessarily monitor that if they enter into a 30-day lease with a person, if that was something? Or even a seven-day lease? I know these are extreme questions, but you know.
It's a great question. And one of the things that we discussed in February as well was that about 85% of the short-term rental activity operates through Airbnb. So while there may be other ways around it, the vast majority of activity is happening through one platform.
Right.
Thank you, you've asked a lot of questions. I went through my list and I think we covered them all, quite frankly. But I'm curious, anything that came out of this evening's meeting that might have influenced your thinking? You mentioned that many of the participants, if not all of them, were new. That is not having participated in one of the other five. Anything else that caught your eye that we should be attuned to?
I just want to chime in on a couple of things that I think are worthy for us to do some follow-up on. One is with regard to the shared driveways. I am very familiar with the situation that was cited this evening. That's a shared driveway, very tight driveway condition, shared by two lots that are smaller lots. We have other situations in the city where we have shared driveways where the driveway serves very large lots, where once you branch off, there's ample parking and all that other stuff. And that's not a problem. So I think that's something I think we should take a look at. The other thing too, that I want to, that I would like to huddle with Ethan on and staff and code enforcement, is this whole issue of non-permanent structures, whether they're RVs, trailers, boats, et cetera. I think the last thing we would like to see is putting an allowance for short-term rental for a vehicle or a boat or whatever that's served by a garden hose and an extension cord. That's not safe, that's not allowed. So we certainly, these regulations that you see up on this slide are very serious and should be taken serious if you're going to be looking at something other than the permanent structure. So those are a couple of things we'll need to look at as well.
Thank you. Let me ask a counsel, we have on the last page, that is 14 options and then recommended action. You see the recommended action, which is accept the staff report, provide direction to staff, next steps for potential short-term rental regulations. First of all, provide direction. Do you have adequate direction from us at this time to return?
Yeah, I think we can take what we heard from the council and bring back a draft ordinance. I don't know that we'll necessarily get it 100% right, but we'll take your comments at that time and we can modify it as needed.
Thank you. With that, there are four options, that being one. Any question concerned? And if not, a motion with regard to recommended action would be appropriate.
Move that we accept the report.
Thank you. Move down. Second, roll call, please. Uh, yes, yes, it is.
No, with, with, the follow-up action as stated by our city manager.
Accept the staff report, provide direction to staff, the next steps for potential SDR regulations.
Yes.
Second.
Move, the second is accepted and therefore a roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Hi.
Councilmember Collins.
Hi.
Councilmember Gamblin.
Hi.
Mayor Phillips.
I'm Matt Akiris, 4-0. Thank you, everyone, for the input, very helpful and excellent report. Thank you so much for that. We'll move on to the now to 5C, which is digital strategic framework. And it's actually McGinnis Park.
Did you go to Albert?
No, I misspoke. It's McGinnis Park. Go up to McGinnis Park, you'll find it up there. I know, I was.
You can blame your poll, blame your poll.
I know, it's my call.
Blame your poll. It's still San Rafael.
It's San Rafael, it's kind of San Rafael, maybe in the county, but it's close enough. Close enough.
Right? Give us that.
No, when I said that, I said, oh, wait, that's McGinnis Park.
So Mayor, I'm going to kick us off with some intro comments as people file out of the room, if that works for you. Let's see, maybe I can ask. We're going to continue on with the meeting. If everyone who's having a conversation could please step outside, please. Lindsay will do it. So it is after nine o'clock, so I'm not sure how you're going to feel about a futuristic conversation at this late hour, but we're going to go through this information because we're very excited about it and we want to get any feedback that you have on it. As the council knows, we're looking at ways to modernize our city services. And we're doing that both for our employees so that they have the right tools that they need to be using to do their jobs properly, but also for our community. So that the services that we're doing are the ones that our community wants us to be doing. And when we say modernizing, we don't always mean technology. So we're often talking about how we design city services to become a 21st century local government. So what Rebecca's going to talk about is if you take all of those city services that we do now or should be doing, or the community would like us to be doing, you start with that as a universe, we need to, as an organization, we need to have some sort of framework that guides us to tell us, how are we going to make modifications to how we're currently providing services? And how are we going to become a 21st century government? And where are we going to choose to focus our efforts? So the digital framework that was put together, I think, tries to answer some of those questions and give us some guidance as to where we're heading organizationally. And the department supports the entire organization. So it's not just focused on this particular department of digital service, but also city services overall. So Rebecca.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. So I'm very excited to share this with you today. We've been working on it for several months now and getting feedback on it. So I'm excited to share with you actually revised draft strategic framework, as well as share some accomplishments that we've had to date and a kind of a lookout at the next year in terms of our work plan, some of the programs and the projects and priorities that we have. So we started this endeavor by asking ourselves a lot of existential questions. Why do we exist? And our first answers to those questions were very long-winded. But as we peeled away the layers of the onion, we landed at a statement, a purpose statement that we found was, was simple and to the point, which is that we exist to make city services easy to use and to work for everyone. And so as we thought about how we would achieve this, we came up with a pyramid of four focus areas. And we show this as a pyramid to show that there is a hierarchy, that a strong foundation is really necessary for all of this work to be executed well. And so technology modernization is really that foundation. It needs to be strong in order for us to do a lot of this other work. And so the strategic framework itself goes into a lot more detail of what the different elements are of these focus areas, but I'll just kind of highlight why they exist or their essential purpose. The technology modernization, that foundation, is really ensuring that our employees have the speed and connectivity that they need to do their jobs. Obviously, in today's world, all of our employees heavily rely on the internet, on things working as they should so that they can do their work. We want to provide tech support that solves people's problems quickly, get them back up and running if something is down and not, and with little impact as possible. We want to make sure our network is stable and secure, that San Rafael is not in the headlines. And we want to ensure that we have forward-thinking standards and policies for the technology that we use and that we buy. The data analytics layer of this is really about us helping the city develop a culture of analytics and performance measurement. I think you saw a good example previous. We want to make sure that our data program and things that we're doing around data is strategic. It's not just numbers for the sake of numbers, but the numbers are in order to deliver services more efficiently, to prioritize risk more strategically, to enforce laws more effectively, and all to increase transparency. So that's really the goals of the data program that we want to design. The service design work, that's the work that we want to do with departments on helping to improve their services. So again, they're easy to use and they're accessible to everyone in the community. Again, government does not choose its customers, our customers are everyone. And we want things to work not just for the community, but also for employees. So there are two sides of transactions. Think of it as we want the form to be easy to fill out, and then on the flip side, we want it to be easy to process. So both sides of that service design is really important to us. And the top of the pyramid is really the work that we want to do to enhance our culture of creative problem solving, learning, collaboration across departments, and then also with the community. We want to ensure that our services are equitable and that they're always getting better. And we want to help departments engage with the community so that decision-makers like yourselves hear the diverse voices and perspectives of the community. So as we thought about how we're going to do this, we thought of the different service offerings that we would have for the departments that want to engage and work with us. And so we want to work in a capacity building way, which is mean we don't do this for departments, we do this with departments. And I want to give a special shout out, she's not here tonight, but she's probably watching from home, actually Paula Double Day helped us with these icons. So this is really a community strategic framework. And so these are the skills and the expertise that we hope to offer to departments as they're doing this good work. And then lastly, this strategic framework, if you read it, it's, it's big picture, it's thinking, thinking big, it's not in the weeds. But we want to use it to inform things that do get in the weeds. So it will inform our annual work plan. And then it will also inform a plan that we hope to develop over the next year, which is a technology improvement plan, similar to a capital improvement plan, but looking at our big enterprise-wide systems, our equipment, and making sure that we're planning for the future and understanding how we're going to fund these big systems that need replacing, just like bridges and roads. And our goal with this is really to create alignment between the annual work plan and the activities that we have every year, as well as our major technology investments. So we're really hoping to create an alignment between all of these. And so we did receive a lot of helpful feedback from both the community as well as city employees over the last couple of months. We did accept some online feedback. We also had a lot of emails come in, we had some one-on-ones with people, and we also made presentations to a lot of departments. We got a lot of feedback. And the feedback helped us, I think, overall simplify the plan. We actually gutted some sections that people said were really boring and they wanted us to get to the point. So the whole first page was pretty much ripped out. And we also, the plan helped us clarify, we clarified our wording in a lot of areas. So we reworded things, got out of our heads. My favorite piece of feedback actually from Paula was, just say what you mean. And so we rewrote some areas where there was a bit too much jargon and we got in our heads too much. And so that was great and we really thank everyone for all of that. It's hard to get people to give input on a strategic framework, as you can imagine. It's not an exciting topic like short-term rentals. And so we're thankful for the feedback that we got. While we didn't get much of a sample size in terms of the online feedback, so we can't really draw any conclusions from it. What we did hear is in alignment with our goals. So we did hear that people want access to more online services, that they want us to continuously improve the content on our website to make sure that people find what they're looking for, that they want us to create more opportunities to listen to the community so that we can really ensure that all voices and perspectives are heard, that we want to make, people want us to look at our permitting process and see what we can do to make improvements there. And each of these themes that we read, heard through the comments, and again, not a statistically valid sample, but those are reflected in our work plan. So our annual work plan is online, it's at cityofsanarfel.org/digital-workplan. And so it's probably too small for you to read here, but some of our major priorities I want to talk a little bit about. We are looking into implementing a single managed service provider approach to streamline our approach to network administration, tech support and cybersecurity, and I'll speak to that a little later. We want to ensure our new essential facilities that are being built have the needed technology, equipment and infrastructure. So that is a major priority for us as a department to make sure we're meeting the needs of those buildings. Again, we're looking to create a data strategy that I spoke to earlier that includes an inventory, a governance framework, a classification policy, a performance framework, so a really robust data strategy. And again, developing a technology improvement plan to accompany next year's budget. Other projects that we thought you'd be interested to know that we're working on is that we're partnering with community development to create an online residential building permit guide, as well as to look at some permit types and see what we can do to streamline them. We're working with Public Works on an online street sweeping map with schedules so people can see when the sweeper will be coming through their neighborhood. We've heard loud and clear that people would like that. We are working with the county and several other community groups on some digital equity issues and learning more about what those are in our community. We are working with a cross-departmental team to improve how we engage with San Rafael's Spanish-speaking communities. And then we're also creating a framework and training for us to apply a product management lens to our service design, and I'll speak to that in a minute. So again, some early goals and accomplishments. We focused on kind of three areas here, streamlining our operations, building our team and our work culture, and then establishing some frameworks for how we work. In terms of streamlining our operations, again, I mentioned earlier, we have a procurement underway for a managed service provider to streamline our approach to network administration, tech support and cybersecurity. We currently work with several vendors to provide this and we want to streamline that to a single vendor. And this is a really critical effort for us. We are currently pretty overwhelmed with a reactive approach to IT. And by moving to this managed service provider model, we hope to free up staff time so that we can proactively work on the strategic initiatives and leave the other work to a single vendor and not have to manage. and leave the other work to a single vendor and not have to manage many, many vendor relationships for all of these services. And so, we're excited about that because it feels like a game changer for us to change from a reactive support model to a proactive support model. We've also outsourced all of our major printing needs to the County of Marin. They provide those services at cost, and we no longer have to maintain an in-house printing shop. And we are doing a lot of auditing of active directory, our device counts, our Microsoft user licenses, and we're really looking at how we can streamline those, clean them up, so that we can save money on support and licensing costs. In terms of building our team and our work culture, we've done a lot here. We've done some reclassifications. We have reclassified our GIS analyst to a data analyst, so he will be working on this broader data strategy. We've also reclassified a network analyst after a retirement to a more generalist digital service analyst. And so, we believe these reclassifications will help with this expanded mission. We're also infusing the way that the team works with daily stand-ups, monthly all-hands, that really pull the team together around shared objectives and help with cross-functional communication. We're also using data to drive our own performance, and in the last six months, we've seen a huge reduction in support ticket backlog, increased cybersecurity training compliance. Thank you for all taking your training, the four of you. And also improved wireless connectivity in City Hall. Actually, this room last week didn't have such good connectivity, and we've improved it. And so, we've also, by shining a light on data, it really does improve performance, and we've seen some great strides. We're also learning and using different methodologies like Kanban and Agile to focus on getting work done really efficiently and effectively and collaboratively. And we've also made some workspace improvements. We've removed our cubicles. We've turned a wall into a whiteboard. And we also, thank you to the police department, we traded a big storage space they had downstairs and expanded it for our network team to have more space to work. So thank you. We're also creating frameworks so that we have alignment and consistency for how we work. We're improving our ability to manage projects. I mentioned a couple of project management methodologies before, but our goal is really to be the best project managers in the city. When departments work with us, we want it to be a great experience in terms of communication and task management. We're also excited about creating a culture of practice around product management for our service design work. Product management in the private sector is how companies create things that people want to use, love using, and seek them out over their competitors. So we want to bring some of those same practices into our context in the public sector, so that our service experiences are enjoyable, that they're easy, and they're certainly not something people dread having to do. And so, we're working on templates and guidance and training to help us better understand the problems we are trying to solve, the impact we are trying to achieve, and then also whether the solutions add real value and are good. And then, we've also begun strategic work around the city's use of data. We've conducted interviews with every department on their existing practices, their pain points, their needs. And then, over the next year, we're going to be laying the foundation to make data more accessible, readily available, more reliable, and easier to maintain. And so, in closing, it's hard for me to find words to describe how honored I feel to be in this position. This work is very exciting. It's also very challenging, and I'm learning every day. So thank you for the privilege, and I hope that the work we do makes you proud to be at the helm of San Rafael. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
First, thanks for your report. You know, I think, my thing about staff, we should have had your report on first, so people could hear what progress we've been made. Nobody knows this, and it's unfortunate because you've really done an outstanding job, and I would think cutting in many ways. But if you line up 100 cities, we'd be at the very top, particularly once this is put in place and moved forward. So thanks, thanks so much for doing that. Questions of staff before we go public?
I have information to add on that very point. One of my colleagues at my very tech company formerly worked with the city of San Rafael at a different job, and she has assured me that we are in fact
There you go.
because of Rebecca, and I would be remiss if I didn't observe that. I believe I'm the only one here who remembers when you started your career with the city of San Rafael. She was an intern.
Yeah, we remember.
No, you, I was on the planning commission. Were you still there?
I think I was.
Okay, sorry.
Well, we won't fight her.
We're all old.
Are you saying we all had a piece in her performance?
It shows how old we all are.
Well, let's not go there.
No, it shows how rapidly she has moved through the ranks, because we're all very young. I stand corrected that we all remember when you started, started your career here. Are we going to take comments from the public?
Well, no, comments here in the routine.
Okay, my comment. On data, I didn't hear about collecting more data. We have, there's a motherload up there of data that we should have ready. You should be able to run a local query and know exactly what street needs to be cleaned next week and what hour of the year we get the most building permits. That will change everything, but you've got to start collecting, and that is the painful part. So I'd like to hear more about data collection. And just a warning, being overly dependent on one vendor, that can, that's the downside. It streamlines it, but you're kind of at their mercy. So keep that in the back of your mind.
Good point, certainly.
I just have more comments. I know we'll go to the public as well. I think back to when, what the website looked like, I don't know, was it five or 10 years ago, and what it looks like now. And that was, we were all so excited about that, not even knowing what you were going to be able to bring, you and your team. And I'm just blown away by the work that's been done internally and the way that you've talked to different, the different groups to get input, so you make sure that it works from an internal standpoint, because as you well know, we started on the external part. And I think about the resident engagement plan that we did, you know, six, seven years ago, which is the top of the pyramid, and realizing we can only get so far until we get the foundational work to really make the work at the top be as robust as we want it to. So I was thinking about like, oh, it's not that we were backwards. We were ahead of our time. We started at the top, and now we're getting the foundation. And I concur with what Mary Beth was talking about in terms of the data. I mean, data is like the buzzword now, but to your point, unless there's a narrative to go along with it, it's not usable. And I know that you get that, because you send me articles to read and books that I should read, and I love them all, so I keep them coming. I think it's fascinating. And I also agree that when we get these data sets, and I was so delighted when you specifically called out open data. And I know that when we had the hackathon here two or three years ago, we had all these people in the room, and we didn't have any data sets to work with. And really, how do we harness the power of the community? To me, that's the ultimate engagement piece, is that we have data. Hey, this is everybody's data. And so, I was very excited when that point comes. And then, the last thing I'll close with, you have a great slide in here in the staff report that wasn't, you didn't show today, but it shows the, how the foundation work needs to happen before the super fun stuff. And I don't mean that the other stuff isn't fun, but I was really glad you put that slide in because it was reminded us and to the community that we are going in this direction, but it's going to take a while. We're going to have behind-the-scenes stuff that they might not see that.
That was our expectation.
Yes, yes. So thank you. So I just wanted, I mean, off the charts excited about where you're going with this.
She's going to be impossible to live with.
Well, I know.
You realize this, of course. But go ahead, John.
No, I just, I'll use my comment here and so speed up. I know we have some comments from the community, but it is amazing what you've done in this timeframe. And as you've heard me say from the dice a couple of times, when we have other agencies that come up here and their data, their digital services are severely lacking, and using you as an example for what they should aspire to. So I think that the entirety of Marin and all of that should look to what San Rafael has done with your leadership to that. So it's great, and we really appreciate it.
Certainly a good point. Public, please. Likewise. Nice to see you this evening.
Hi there. My name is Christine Bachman. I live in San Rafael. I look forward to meeting you personally and shaking your hand. I'm a professional project manager. I'm very excited about what you're doing. I think it's fabulous, and it's very exciting. I know that you are, have an RFP out to find a single provider, and the company that I currently work for and my background and experience, I have some things that I'd like to talk to you about that we can do to augment what you're doing. So I'll give you one of my business cards, and I'd like to follow up with you. Thank you. And it's good to see all of you again. I've worked with them before. Baypoint Lagoons, where I live, we did a lot of discussion about the parking and things like that, so.
Thanks for sticking it out this evening. Anyone else? I think it's a fair question to ask. Seeing none return. Well, you know, good job. And we have a matter before us, which is to accept your report. Any further comments before we do so?
I move to accept the report.
And move in a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy. Councilmember Collin.
Aye.
Councilmember Gamblin.
Aye.
Mayor Phillips.
Four zero. Thank you very much. And we'll now turn to the final item, which is grand jury report. School resource officer. I think it's the final, yeah. Glenn, good evening. You can make it short and sweet if you wish. We're dying fast up here.
The chief just asked me to do that. Good evening, Mayor Phillips and members of the council. As you know, on May 30th of this year, the Marin County Civil Grand Jury released a report titled "School Resource Officers Revisited." So this is more or less follow-up from a report that was done by the 2009, 2010 Marin Civil Grand Jury. In this most recent report, their approach was to interview officials from the Marin County Office of Education, current school resource officers in the county, former school resource officers, police chiefs, school district superintendents, and a sheriff, a sheriff's officer. They did ride-alongs with officers, and they visited a number of schools and attended school safety drills. They came out with 12 findings, which I won't go through each one. We're not asked to respond to any of the findings, but a couple of them are this. Finding number one, school resource officers promote strong collaborative relationships between schools and law enforcement that benefit the entire community. Finding number two, SRO programs are wise investments that help provide safe learning environments for students, reduce crime, and build strong relationships with students, parents, and school staff. Specific to San Rafael, finding number six, the city of San Rafael has one SRO for over 7,300 students, which is insufficient. And then, on finding 12, collaboration between SROs improves their effectiveness, but they do not meet regularly or frequently to exchange ideas and information. They came up with 12 recommendations. We were not asked to respond to all of them, but many of them. And I will go over some of those that I felt would be most best to highlight. Recommendation number one, SRO programs in Marin County should be retained or expanded where they now exist. SRO programs should be established to cover those school districts where they do not exist. Our response is we agree. We have no plans to eliminate our SRO program and are continuing looking for funds to add an additional full-time SRO. Recommendation number three says to ensure continuity, each SRO should be assigned to serve for at least a four-year term. Our response is we disagree. Over my 26 and a half years, I've seen it both ways, where we have an SRO in the business for a long time. Most recently, we rotate our SRO every three years and have found that that is efficient. Our SRO is assigned to our investigations bureau. They're one of our six detectives, and most of them rotate every three years. They're on our on-call list, which I mean by that is our six detectives are, one of them's on-call 24/7/365. So they're part of that on-call list. If we have something major in our investigations where it's all hands on deck, they're dropping their school resource responsibilities and helping with a major investigation. So recommendation number five, the city of San Rafael should have at least one additional full-time SRO. And again, like I said, we absolutely agree with that. We value the SRO position and are continuing to seek funding for another SRO. And recommendation number 10, school districts and municipalities should explore funding sources such as grants, bond issues, special taxes, or other resources. And our response is we agree. We currently are partnering with the San Rafael City Schools to apply for a grant for a school resource officer to get a tobacco education enforcement at the 13 schools within the district. This grant, if we get it, will pay for a full-time SRO, which would be outstanding. Recommendation 11, school districts and municipalities should consider sharing the costs and services of SRO programs. We agree. Costs of the SRO program, whether there is one or two SROs, should involve cost sharing between the school districts and municipalities. And finally, recommendation 12, county law enforcement agencies should provide the time and facilities for SROs to meet regularly, to exchange information, ideas, and discuss new trends. We agree, and we are already in the process of implementing that, to either have quarterly meetings, certainly at the beginning of the school year, during the school year, and maybe at the end of the school year. I also want to address the, when we switch our SROs every three years, we do it prior to the beginning of the school year, so the outgoing SRO can take the new SRO and meet staff at all the schools and kind of learn the lay of the land, so we don't do it in the middle of the school year. With that, answer any questions?
Okay, any questions by anyone?
Yeah, thanks, Glenn. So ideally, two, three for the city of San Rafael, I mean, what, in your expert opinion?
So ideally, we have, our current SRO spends most of his time either at County Community, TerreLinda High School, San Rafael High School, or Davidson. I mean, the ideal situation is you would have one for each school, or at least three for the San Rafael public schools, and they can go to County Community as needed. But I think if we can get a second full-time SRO, we're ahead of the game. I talked to our current SRO, and he's just, he's enforcing crime, and that's part of their duties. But part of their duties, we would want them to be, is to be getting to know the kids, getting to know the staff that are more presence on the campus, where the students are learning that they have personalities and they're friendly. And it's just that environment that we would, we would gain by having more presence with more SROs.
And this might be kind of silly, but there's not a need at the elementary school level? It's more nearly at the middle school and high school level?
Correct. It's the age. I mean, you know, Davidson, you're getting into the middle school age. We spend a lot of time there, but they tend to be less complicated things, such as possession of tobacco. Where you get into the high schools, you tend to get more complicated crime potentially, where things are, they're not there as much, but they're spending more time per incident.
And what do the SROs do during the summer? I mean, if the school's not in session?
Usually, they're, they'll spend time cleaning up reports that haven't been completed. Sometimes, we transfer them to patrol, because our staffing generally in the summertime, people are on vacations, what have you. It helps our staffing levels to put that person in patrol. This year, our SRO was involved with Camp Chance, so we kept him in his position.
Right, and in terms of, it was good to see, and one of the recommendations is to find the funding sources, and then it shouldn't be wholly on the municipality, but also to look to the school districts to find grant funding. And it sounds like there's already been requests for grant funding for those. And my concern would be if there's not a steady stream, that, I don't know how long these, like this one specific grant that you were talking about, is that a one-year grant, two-year grant, three-year grant, is?
It's a five-year grant.
Okay.
So that would be a concern with us as well, is you fill it and the grant goes away.
Right, right.
So it is, it is five years, so we're hoping to...
Do we, have we had conversations with the school districts? Well, I guess San Rafael School District, but I would, I guess there's one Dixie School and TerreLinda High School in the TerreLinda area. To look at their, I know their budgets are tight as well, but if it's spread across all the different schools that they're... that they're interacting with to get a more consistent stream of funding? Have we looked to or interacted as the chief makes her way up here?
I would say that the chief, I know, has had conversations and she might want to come in and ask that.
Okay.
Good evening. So, since day one that I've got here, I, I've had a conversation with Santa Fel City Schools on, you know, basically, why don't you assist us paying for this service that we give your school district? And very open to the discussion, but I believe there are two parts of the district. One has the, the high schools and one has the elementary schools and the, the middle school. The funding source for the, the high schools does not, would not allow them, is what I've been told in the past, to fund a school resource officer or part of it. But, the funding source for Davidson would. So, with the previous superintendent, I'd had some discussions and he was very open to the idea of perhaps a, a part-time SRO for just Davidson. I pretty much, Jim Hogabloom's second day on the job here in, in Santa Fel City Schools, I met with him to talk about the grant opportunity that Captain McHeldry's talking about and also to just open up the dialogue of having the school district, what they can do in their financing structure to, if, if we do get this grant or if we don't get this grant, continue to try to have a second SRO. It's, it's, what, it's, it's, we don't have enough staff time for it and it's huge. I think that, to your question, is the lower grades that we could touch, you know, if we could get into some, just even just, hey, how's it going in the elementary schools would be fantastic. So, we're not this, oh, my gosh, it's the police, but rather, hey, the police came and read a book today. I mean, just something where we're, we're there and we are looked at as a positive and not a negative because sometimes that's, that's the, what happens when we get to the middle school and the high school. But, so to answer the question, the discussions are ongoing and I, I have a feeling that it's a great opportunity with a new superintendent to continue the discussions.
Thank you. And this might be for Christine or Jim. You know, we have our paramedic tax, which is, which is a very specific tax for paramedic services, both for the city of Santa Fel and the CSAs that we, we look at. Could this be as a funding source? Because I, just, just thinking about it conceptually, I, I, I find it hard to believe, I would find it hard to believe that there would be a community against a, what would be, what it would be a small to fund one or two school resource officers using that specifically for that in form of a, of a parcel amount that would be ongoing, that would solve that need for, you know, renewing grants and there'd be a continual stream. Because when we use the, the paramedic tax specifically for, what is it, 14 paramedics? 18 paramedics? Have something like that at, at a much smaller level because we don't need maybe one or two more at the most. I can't imagine that it would be a, a large thing and I don't even know if that's possible.
So, first let me ask the chief, are you okay taking paramedic tax money?
I would prefer to get a different tax. I'd have the paramedics.
Sure, that was his question.
Sorry. I couldn't resist. Well, my, my first answer is that the, the paramedic tax that we get, it only covers a small proportion of our overall paramedic needs within the fire department. And the second part of it is I would need to look from, from the legal standpoint of what was passed by the voters. I would, my assumption is that it probably would not, as currently written, be able to be used for this purpose.
No, I was thinking it's just totally separate one. Separate, separate and distinct. You know, the, the paramedic tax would do whatever it's doing, so we wouldn't have to mess with that. But, putting something out to the residents and the voters that says, you know, because we, we hear about people saying, oh, we need school resource officers. We talk about that, but then it's like, okay, then it just kind of goes away and we don't have a source for the funding of that.
Sure. It's something that could be funded through a general sales tax or through parcel?
Or just a parcel.
Absolutely.
Yeah. I don't know, I mean, how many parcels would it take at, you know, $10 a parcel to fund an officer?
Two bucks.
Yeah. So...
But, there's a bigger fish to fry when it comes to that.
I understand that. I'm just, I'm just, you know, we, we've got a need, we, we, you know, it seems like we're not having the best of luck with funding it so far. And if we are, it's going to be for a, a period that we don't know will be extended. And it doesn't sound to me that the need for a school resource officer will stop in five years. I mean, that would be great if it was, but I don't see that happening, so.
Glenn can answer this question a little better, but at some point, we did have two school resource officers and that was probably before the recession. And it was a big hit to the department because we just have so many calls for service there and if, if we had more than one SRO, then the other officers would be doing other things that people are calling for and not getting as quick a service as perhaps they would, would want and we would like to give them.
So, I've got two, two questions, I guess, starting with that one, that one being school resource officer. Is it, is it, I know it's preferable, but is it necessary to have a sworn officer in that position?
I think unfortunately, in the times that we live in now, yes. So, for example, up until a couple of years ago, our, since we talked about, our SRO is also on our investigations call-out list and is an investigator, just because we have the need for that, they would drive their unmarked Ford Taurus to the school and do their work and, and leave and go to the next call. And I asked, hey, we need to have them drive a black and white police car to the school because I want the bad guy or the bad gal, I'll let, I'll be fair here, to know that there's a police officer at that school at that time. Because with all the gun violence that we're seeing in our communities and schools being targeted, you mentioned a couple of schools in your, in your opening. I want and I would prefer to have someone who is a trained police officer with a handgun and with the other tools that we have there rather than, if you don't, if you have a non-sworn person, then they can't deal with the actual criminal things that sometimes we deal with. They could certainly deal with the, the counseling and the, and the referrals to maybe other things like that, but I think it's imperative that the person be a sworn police officer.
And I can certainly see the benefit. I guess I'm thinking and you know far better, I can't help but think that Lynn Murphy would be effective in that role on the side and then if there was an incident, obviously call her backup and, and she's not carrying guns either. And just the whole dynamic seems like it might be in some ways more effective. Not all certainly, but in some ways it feels to me like it might be.
Our schools have marriage family therapists, which is what Lynn is, on, on staff and other counselors, so I think they have that pretty covered to deal with the students every day. I, her role, obviously, helping our mentally ill homeless population is, but it's, it's, there's a niche for that that she, right now, is the only one that fills.
Yeah, I understand that, but it's, it still feels to me like some, that it might, feels like, might actually be a better match in some ways. But, I don't want to beat on that at this point in time. Last week, I was invited to, to attend a radio show by someone that Canal, she originated from Canal and primary audience was Latino. And a call-in question was presented, caught me a little bit by surprise, but nevertheless, a valid question, I think. And the question was, what are we going to do about gang activity? And what seems to be, the question was, what seems to be on the rise? And I guess my, my question in this context, not a full-blown question with regard to the issue, is what role does our SRO play with regard to gang activity that's presented on, on the campuses?
The SRO is always looking for intelligence on gangs in the schools and, you know, as a, as an investigator, as a police officer, they're looking for signs or reports of gang violence. The violence we're having with gangs, most recently this summer, is not school-related. It's certainly away from the schools. Not to say that it's not there, but we've, we've started a, not to get off the subject, but I just mean internally, we've started because we used to have a street crimes unit that were gang experts and because staffing levels aren't what they used to be, we've created this internal position called a gang expert where we asked interested officers in the department, would you be willing to take this burden and, and learn and become an expert for our department, for the county as an additional, no pay, just something you're interested in doing? Put a gang book together, put all the intelligence together. And we had three or four officers that are interested and so the intelligence helps us so much. And, and so, back to the schools, a school resource officer could easily have intelligence about who is going to school that is a documented gang member. And, and that, that's huge, just to have the information ahead of anything that might happen.
Not now, but at some point in time, I'd be interested in an update on that issue because it frankly did catch me by surprise and it was stated, right or wrong, I can't make that judgment, you could, that the gang activity seems to be on the increase. And so, if that's the case, I'd, I'd like us to know more about that.
I, I think that that was an accurate statement. We had a huge lull for quite a few years because the main players were in prison and they are slowly getting out, their sentences are over and they're coming back to their community. We are aware of that. We've seen an uptick. We are trying to keep up with, with parole and probation to know who's in town. We know that anyway because we're, we're notified. But, just to, I totally lost my, my train of thought. Just, go ahead.
I, I can tell you that we're getting intelligence that gang members from out of the area, the Central Valley, they're moving over here to help cultivate and encourage gang participation. And it's, it's alarming for us because I, I've been here for 26 and a half years. I've seen the gang violence go up and down. And, you know, 15, 20 years ago, we had a lot of gang violence and we had the resources and the intelligence, which is so important. When something happens, the officers on the street, the patrol officers may not know who the participants are, but once we start investigating and we have officers that have the intelligence, that's when we start putting pieces together and we figure out who, because they don't go by their real names, they use nicknames and it's the nickname that, that the intelligence identifies.
Yeah, exactly. Frankly, I don't want to get us sidetracked on that issue, but I think that I would and I suspect we would be interested if it's an upswing. Like to have a sense of what that's all about, what we're doing about it. So, not, not to, to labor the point. Let's see, I guess we need to go to public. Anyone from the public wish to address us on this side?
Have a couple of comments.
Sure.
First of all, thank you for your work and your good help. Couple of comments on the parcel tax. I'm a homeowner. I would more than happy, I would be more than happy to have a parcel tax. It would help fund the kind of services you need. And I think there's an opportunity with your school resource officer to get into the schools and you talked about it a little bit, and start building a relationship with the kids so they see you as a resource. That's exactly what you are. You're a fabulous resource to have around and so if they're accustomed to seeing people and if, if there's an opportunity in your department to maybe pair up and share the responsibility, you know, maybe in, within four schools, you have three people that you can share things with. I don't know. It's just an idea. Anyway, I'd like to thank you very much for your help and support and I, I would be supportive of a parcel tax. I have no idea what it would be, but...
More than $2, but...
No, I think, I think there's a lot of value. I mean, there's a lot of value in being proactive and being prepared and you're talking about the intelligence and those kinds of things. That's exactly what it takes, so.
And thank you for your comment. Anyone else? Close. Further comments, questions, comment? Seeing none, is there a motion with regard to the resolution?
I make a motion that we adopt the resolution.
And?
Second?
And second. Roll call, please.
Count Number Bushy.
Aye.
Count Number Colin.
Aye.
Count Number Gamblin.
Aye.
Mayor Phillips.
I am at our cares, four zero. Member reports?
Very quickly, this Sunday...
Thanks, Glenn, chief.
Thank you. This Sunday, the city of Santa Fel, Marin Commutes, which is the Transportation Authority of Marin, their commute program, and the Santa Fel Pacific Baseball has a game on Sunday at 1:00 PM and I'm throwing out the first pitch. And I'm just, my husband's like, you can't be four feet away, so I have to go work on that. So, I'm very, very excited. So, come on out.
The chief can help you with that.
Yeah, come on out and heckle and if you ride your bike, you can get entered into a raffle, so it's going to be a great time. It's a beautiful way to spend a Sunday afternoon, so that's 1:00 PM on Sunday.
I'm, I'm taking the under on two bounces. The under, I guess, it might be. Anything else by anyone in the interest of time I'll pass as well. Successor agency, there's a report.
What do they miss in our report? I move that we accept the report.
And?
Second.
Second, and anyone from the public? Move in second, roll call, please.
Member Bushy.
Aye.
Member Colin.
Aye.
Member Gamblin.
Aye.
Chairman Phillips.
I am at our cares. Oops. Okie dokie, thank you.